All right, everybody. It is time to start the meeting. Thank you for being here this evening. Thank you for being here this evening. This is a regular city council meeting, so regular rules follow. It's different than a workshop where it's very interactive and anybody can speak at any time. With that, call meeting to order at 5:30. Please stand for the questions. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the divided states of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible. Please be seated. All right, City Secretary, we have a quorum. Councilmember Darren Nance is on Zoom this evening. He is away on vacation. Hi, Darren. Thank you for being here. Hope you're enjoying California. Councilmember Nance does not count as part of the quorum, but we do still have a quorum with all other councilmembers being here. All right, and proof of notice of meaning, please.
Thank you, Mayor. The notice of this meeting was posted by 2:00 PM on Friday, June 14th.
All right, great. City Secretary, do we have any public comments?
We do have one from Sarah in Ridgefield.
All right, so reminder, public comments are three minutes and council cannot respond. If you would just state your name and if you live in the city, your ward or the ward of your business.
Sarah Bo and.
Richard Black, Ward 1.
We want to.
The business is in Ward.
Yeah, City Drug is Ward.
Okay.
I don't even know that ward.
That's okay.
But first of all, I want to thank all of y'all for what you do. Y'all are amazing. And we're just trying to get the alley between City Drug and then next to us where Dr. Pond's wall was. That was their wall. It's a small area because Bob and Lucy Ward want to move the plants to value garden center. And they're real excited. We've been remodeling. We're almost through. And so they're well-known in the community. They've helped so many people. They're awesome. You know, we love the wards. The city loves them. And we're just trying to get that. We want to buy it.
That will make it clear that he can use it, not build one. Clear for the sewer and everything. And but that's it's it'll help him better manage the plans. And I'm not sure if it's a make it a regular deal, but it could be because he has to deal. It's not just up to him. It's up to the company too, and they have to come in and look at everything. And right now, the whole situation is that if, you know, the plants can go out in that area. And of course, they can bring him in at night and put a fence around it and things like that.
It's a real asset to the community. Everybody's really excited.
Lots of sales tax coming in for years and years now. He's going to sign a five-year with a five-year option. And then he says when he's out of it, probably Ace Hardware will want it. Right now, that area, it's 0.05 an acre, has not made a penny for the city in 50 years.
So we'll probably help everybody.
So as far as, again, the issue came up with dumpsters. We were talking to the man that takes care of the dumpsters. She was about to do, and I was about to do both. And he said that the dumpsters can only go where you want to, where your business is. So there was this, the city drug can use their, that alleyway, even though you don't own it, you, you know, it's your permission because you have the use of that alley up until the middle. And the other person has the use of that up until the middle. There's just a few feet in question that the city actually reserves. Otherwise, you can use it, but you can't build one. And so even, you know, if we never got the alley, he's, I hate to say it, there's three dumpsters in and two of them don't belong there.
Yeah.
So they could have to be moved.
We only have one.
Who owns the alley is irrelevant.
Anyway, thank you.
Hey, City Secretary, do we have any other public comments?
That concludes public comments.
Okay, we're going to move on to public hearings. If anybody stands to speak in regard to a public hearing, it works much the same way. Council cannot respond to you, and you'll have three minutes. And when you come to the podium, just state your name and ward. City Secretary, 5:35 PM, we're going to begin public hearings. Public hearing A to obtain citizen views and comments regarding the second and final reading of ordinance 2024-05-03 and ordinance amending Chapter 10 Animals to the Alpine Code of Ordinances, providing for updated definitions within the chapter, including definitions of adequate shelter, definition of euthanasia, definition of current vaccination requirements, amending the processes, procedure, and timelines for the impoundment and destruction and euthanasia of animals impounded by the city, providing the establishment of up to $500 penalty per occurrence or violation of the ordinance. Is there anybody here to speak on this? Okay, seeing none, we're moving on to public hearing B. To obtain citizen views and comments regarding the second and final reading of ordinance 2024-05-04 and ordinance amending annexation process and procedures to the Alpine Code of Ordinances, amending Chapter 9 annexation to provide additional requirements upon annexation of subject property, amending Appendix C zoning to remove the requirement that properties be designated R1 upon annexation and providing the city council may establish the zoning designation upon annexation of a subject property. Is anybody here to speak on this? Seeing none, we're moving on to public hearing C to obtain citizen views and comments regarding the second and final reading of ordinance 2024-06-01 and ordinance authorizing the vacation abandonment and sale of the partially developed and utilized alley between lots 6 and 8 and 9 and 11, Block 3. Original townsite of the city of Alpine, Rooster County, Texas, authorizing the sale, authorizing the city manager to execute a deed without warranty, directing that the funds from the sale of the city's interest be deposited in the general fund for the purpose of street improvements, providing for terms and conditions of such thereof. Is there anybody here to speak on this? Okay, seeing none, I'm going to close public hearings at 5:37 PM. City Secretary. Moving on to presentations and recognitions, there are none. Proclamations, there are none. Community interest items. Mayor announcements, June 27. We have an activity from, I believe it's Our Lady of Peace Catholic Church to the site. If anybody is interested in going for a prayer vigil, we have the Let It Rain. It's a fundraiser on 6/28 and 6/29, also for the victims of the Memorial Day Fire. Fourth of July starts at 9:30 at the county courthouse, and it runs pretty much all day long, including with a dance at the American Legion. And lunch is also being served at the American Legion. And the Alpine Historic Association is still accepting funds for donation to the victims of the fire. If you want to donate some money to that organization, they will make sure that the victims receive it. City manager announcements?
Just a couple. One very important one, the pool is open. And I do want to thank Eddie and his team for getting that all to happen. I know we had some unfortunate events, but the pool is open. And you can buy your pool passes here at City Hall, or you can get the key at the actual pool. Tomorrow is Juneteenth, so city offices will be closed. So if you come by the city hall or some of the other buildings, employees will not be. And then just to follow up on the Let It Rain Alpine Fire Benefit, it's actually going to be held at TechSpop, the Granada and Alco Front Street Books in the American Legion. So it's a two-day event at those different locations, just in case someone wants to pop in and have a meal with the Legion or, you know, listen to some music at the Granada or Front Street Books.
Okay, good deal. All right. Councilmember Stone?
Thank you, Mayor. Just wanted to say thank you again, Megan, for noting that tomorrow is Juneteenth. It's, of course, the proclamation, proclamation was in 1863, but it took a while to get to the Confederate States. So this is a great celebration in many of our black communities across the state. It's also known as kind of a Second Independence Day. And so thank you to, of course, our president for making that a federal holiday in 2021. And of course, for the city recognizing that as well. I also want to note that this month is Pride Month, and so that also is another fantastic celebration, noting that the Stonewall Inn riots happened in New York City back in 1969. And with that, on June 23rd, the Alpine Pride Pool Party is happening from 6 to 8. That's at the city pool. And there will be some organizations there as well, and it's a family-friendly event, so all are welcome. It's a free pool time. If you haven't had a chance to use the pool, you can come out to the Alpine Pride Pool Party on this Sunday from 6 to 8 PM. That's all I got.
Okay, thank you. Bye, Councilmember Alves.
And yes, I wanted to inform that we have a meeting with the council from the district of Presidio. They were here. It's Council Gamaliel Bustillos and Diego Colrado de la Barcas. They were here in Alpine, and we had a short meeting with them. They, they give us an explanation what they do besides just give Mexican identification. They give scholarships away, and they do a lot of work in this area. And they want to promote the international commercial and cultural exchange with all the surroundings area, and they want to see how we can work together. So that was a very successful invitation. And they invited us to the celebration on the Mexican Independence Days in the Council and Presidio, September 12. And they celebrate a date of the dead, and they would like some students from Alpine go and build up an altar for the Dia de los Muertos. So they, they would like to buy some high school students to go there and be part because they go from Presidio and Marfa, they build all this in the council. So they like to exchange cultures with us. So it was a very successful meeting. And then just to complete the information that you said, it would be a celebration, the Catholic Church, in Thursday, June 27. And we, and they are inviting all that now Catholic organizations to all can come and pray together with the fireworks. So, so it would be good, inclusive for all the businesses. And it's an open invitation for the whole community. Hopefully, a lot of people can join us.
Following up on the scholarship, some of the students, it's still Ross, received scholarships. That was interesting to find out. Councilmember Escobia? Councilmember Stevens? All right, good deal. Okay, moving on.
Don't forget Councilman.
Oh, Councilor Nance. Keep reminding me.
I just had a quick update. I was just going to say, council gave the task to Megan on kind of implementing more technology this year. She did reach out to me, just kind of asking some questions, and I think she's reached out to Reach in 18, had a couple of meetings with them. So she's kind of laying the groundwork there to figure out what they need in technology. Correct me if I'm wrong, Megan, but I think y'all were talking about possibly a technology audit or something to see where we're at. So just to keep the council in the loop, I think they're moving forward with that, and hopefully this year we'll get some progress.
Okay.
Nice, back to the software.
Good.
Hate to have software that we can't support.
Right. All right, so moving on to changes to the agenda. A, items to be continued or withdrawn. Are there any?
I have is, are we continuing with 11D since we have a special council meeting on that last week?
No, we need to probably withdraw that. So is there a motion to withdraw it?
That we would draw action with 11D.
I need a second. I'll second that. Okay, any discussion? Let's vote.
Hi.
I have seen. Hi.
Hi.
Councilmember?
Hi.
Okay, City Secretary, this motion to withdraw item 11D has passed with four council members voting for it and Councilmember Alves abstaining.
So can Darren vote?
Yes, he can. Yeah, he just doesn't count as a quorum. He counts his attendance and he can vote. Yes. Yeah, so he is present. It doesn't count as an absentee. He can vote. Just not a quorum. You're welcome. Good for asking. So 11D, okay. Moving on to items to be removed from consent agenda. Are there any items to remove? Councilmember Nance? Okay, moving on to action items to be added to the consent agenda. Councilmember Escobado? Councilwoman Nance, okay. Time-sensitive items, any time-sensitive items? Okay, all right, moving on to the consent agenda. City Secretary?
Thank you, Mayor. Tonight's consent agenda does six items. Item one is approval of June 3, 2023 workshop meeting minutes. Item two is approval of June 4, 2023 regular meeting minutes. Item C is approval of June 5, 2023. I'm sorry, actually, and I need to make a quick note that those are actually 2024. Workshop meeting minutes, approval of June 6, 2024 workshop meeting minutes. Item E is approval of Lisa Nix to replace seven position on the planning and zoning commission. And item F is approved payment of the May 2024 monthly billing summary for the work as law for services.
Okay, I need a motion to approve the consent agenda with the change to 2024.
I make a motion.
Okay.
To approve the consent agenda with the change of 2024 on items A through D.
Perfect. I need a second. All right, and let's vote. All in favor, please raise your right hand. Okay, our City Secretary passed unanimously with all council members voting to approve the consent agenda with the change in that typo. All right, we had no items removed. There are no reports and presentations. Let's move on to information or discussion items. The first one belongs to Councilmember Nance.
Okay, on that discussion item, basically, I was just wanting to put this back on the agenda. The previous council with Stevens and I, Mr. Stevens and I began this discussion, but we, we're still in process on the whole thing. Basically, I wanted to put this on here. I think we still have some short-term rentals that are operating without a permit, so they're out of compliance. Basically, I wanted to see where the council is on a couple of these issues, the parking ordinance one, the permit fees, to see if we want to amend that ordinance so that it puts those short-term rentals in compliance so that they can seek a permit. Or just to kind of get this back on and see the appetite from council on amending the ordinance. So I guess I'll turn this over to Megan, if you don't mind, to just kind of discuss a couple of the items. One was kind of history and what our current guidelines are for the parking requirements. And then also permit fees, kind of comparing maybe us to Marfa.
So currently, on the parking restrictions, because I know you don't have copies of the ordinance in front of you, the parking, this is how it currently reads. The parking is established by the International Building Code, IBC, and will differ based on the zoning districts. I do know that the IBC is currently possibly changing those parking requirements, so that's something you need to take into consideration. There's an additional section that says guidelines are as follows. One parking space per sleeping unit plus one parking space per 500 square feet of common area. The parking space is required shall be on the same lot or where use of such is provided on another lot, not more than 500 feet from the subject lot. This has been a back and forth with the parking. There's the concern with parking on the street. There's a concern with parking on vegetation. There's the concern with parking in other people's driveways or areas. So I know that, I know Mr. Stevens had mentioned, let's just do the IBC. Currently, it's one, and they're looking at moving it to two. We need to consider that. And so this has been an ongoing discussion because it has caused some of the applicants to not be compliant because their permits aren't being approved because they don't meet these recommendations. But we know they're still operating. We can cite them as much as we want. They can go through the court system, but it's really not going to deter them at this point. The other big item of discussion that's been before council is the fees. I know that we've all kind of looked at, what are we charging now? So the first year permit is $350. It includes the preliminary fire inspection, and then the annual renewal is 100. One of the things that I know that's been brought up, and I think you may chime in on this, is do we want to hire a third party to actually manage our STRs to help keep them one in compliance, make sure they're collecting or paying their taxes? If that's the case, if we looked at the permitting fee to cover that expense, it's not sustainable year after year. The 350 ideally could cover the first year if everyone paid the 350. The $100 renewal doesn't work to be able to support a third party to make sure that they're staying compliant and doing their jobs. I know that there's been some internal discussion. I know our building official, our permit tech, as well as Gio, our finance department, we've all had the conversation of how do we process? How do we get something in place? How do we enforce it? How do we just make it consistent? So that's been an ongoing discussion. I know that Gio and I believe Councilor Nance have both visited with some of the third-party organizations. We know that the county had utilized one for a while as well. So when we're looking at the renewal and permit fees, I really do think it'd be a good discussion to consider if we use a third party to put those fees, cover that expense. So then there's no additional cost to the city, and it relinquishes some of that extra workload for three different departments. It, it goes through building services. It goes through the city secretary's office, and it goes through finance. So that would reduce some of that time. I know Marfa, I believe, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, Councilwoman Nance, I believe there's this 500 initial. And I want to say, or is it 500 and 100 per unit?
500 and 100 per unit.
So they have a rather steep STR. And but this did kind of go to the back burner because we all knew we were going to have a changeover on council, and we wanted to bring it back up so it doesn't kind of sit in a holder on a desk. So those are the main things that we had talked previously about. And then, of course, there was a discussion of no permitting, no renewal fees. But I know just over the past probably three months, just sitting down and listening to Gio's office and Robert's office and finance and in trying to figure out how is this going to work and how do, who sends what and who does what, and how do we make sure they're collecting? And, and just that process, it's time-consuming.
So when you say 100 per unit, you mean that's the annual renewal fee? What, what do you mean? Please explain, Councilwoman Nance.
No problem. As far as I can tell, I'm 90% 90% sure this is correct. So our first year is one flat $350 payment. Our year-over-year, so the renewal would be $100, which barely, I think, covers, Gio can speak to this, the inspection fee, because we, I think we require an inspection once every year. And having that gentleman out, I think he charges us 100. So we're really only covering our expenses on year one. After year two and on those short terminals are basically just the $100 fee only covers the inspection. Marfa, on the other hand, charges $500 plus 100 per unit. So I think that would be $600, even if it's one unit. So for 700, if you have two units onsite, things like that. But at least 500 as a base fee. And that cost is year one and year, every year after. So the way they did their setup, there is no reduction in fee for years afterwards, which kind of makes it seem like they're really trying to cover their cost. They did not go with a third party or anything else like that to manage theirs. But they have a fee structure that would make that sustainable.
Councilwoman Stone?
Thank you, Mayor. Got a lot of experience in this, and so I appreciate you bringing this up, Darren. From my time when I was the executive director in Fort Davis at the Chamber of Commerce, we were working with the county to be able to create a permit permitting way, and it's, I think it's actually going to create to where there's going to be a new treasure in the county. Because there's a lot of folks, and I know they might be here as well, is people want to, to, you know, of course, treat all of our Airbnbs and STRs the same and equal platform, but they also want to make sure that the city is, of course, making some money out of this and making sure that they all are in compliance. Of course, there's been a lot of pushback from the state in making, in, in kind of putting parameters in the ways that we can do this. My personal belief, and I just Googled this right now. I don't know if we need an outside agency, especially if we're not making at least our money back on inspections and so forth, is I just Googled this, it's, and we could easily get a, it's fairly cheap to get an AirDNA, but again, this just came out of Google from last year's, they released this information. $163 a night is the average short-term rental cost in Alpine, and the average is about a 40% occupancy. And so that means that, again, the average short-term rental, and especially if they're doing this as a full-time business, it's making almost $24,000 per year on each one of these short-term rentals. My belief is getting somewhere between 5 and 10% of occupancy costs. That might be extremely steep. And so, but at the same time, if we charge someone $500 or $1,000 for these permits per year, this isn't someone that's just dipping their toes in. Like I said, you make $163 a night. Typically, you're adding cleaning fees onto that. And so that is coming straight back to the person. So if you rent for 10 nights, you make the 1,000 bucks, or even if it's, you know, five nights, or I guess with even three or four nights, that would make the $500 permit fee. And in my belief, I think we should be able to, you know, raise that, make sure that we're covering our costs and as well as adding a little bit of money to the city coffers. And so that's my personal view there on that. As far as parking, this is a tuffy. You know, one parking space per sleeping area and per 500 square foot, because a lot of times you might put a couch or an extra bed or something in there, and so that can be maybe even another sleeping room. I think that covers it. If we really start going just by the International Building Code and start to move that to two, to two spaces, I think we might be starting to overstep to, you know, needed. We might be putting a lot more Airbnbs out of compliance, and we want to bring Airbnbs into compliance. The same thing with that is, you know, I'm thinking about downtown structures. A lot of these places are going to be having people parking on the streets, and so I'm interested to hear where that plays into this too, but I want to hear more from y'all as well. So thank you, Mayor.
Councilmember Stevens?
So I've raised the issue of not parking because of the issues I consistently hear from residents of Ward 5 that they do not want parking on vegetation. That's number one. So that's a firm complaint. And then my view is, well, I know the rationale behind the International Building Code is written primarily for cities, not areas like Alpine. I do believe having two parking spaces makes sense, even though it's more than the IBC requires. That said, we talked about all the issues, particularly on the southeast side of town, where there aren't any parking spaces, and that's allowed to occur. So I do think it would be helpful if we came up with some accommodation that worked both sides, which is one, where there is no parking, how do we accommodate that? How do we make sure the residents of Ward 5 aren't put out by people filling up parking spaces? Because that's a consistent complaint that I get. I know that Chris Rujia has talked about where occupancy is. I'm, I'm looking online as well. I wish, because I get feedback, I've been told rents, people make a lot of money. I just don't see it. So I am sensitive to permit fees. I'm one who just said, forget the permit fees. I just want to make sure we get the hotel occupancy tax in. I understand the intent by permit fees. I just think frankly, I'd go out to the 75 hundred and twenty ones we have, find out how much we're making, and come back and say, okay, here's what seems to make sense. I know there are some that are making lots of money, and there are some who are not doing well at all. I know in the hotel business, property tax is not based upon the value of the property. It's based upon income. So I don't know if there's a way to work a sliding scale. Probably more complex to work it. But we know they're paying hotel occupancy tax. We know what the return is based upon that percentage coming in. And that would imply if we're going to have more complexity there, we are going to have to charge fees to accommodate that. So I get there needs to be some fee associated with it.
While you're thinking, Megan's raised her hand a couple of times, I think, to answer some of your questions.
Yes, and then Robert, you can correct me if I'm wrong. He's here this evening. The IBC is looking at changing the parking requirements from one to two.
Okay, and I'm good with that.
They do. Robert, is that correct?
The IBC is also, I'm not talking about the ratio.
Then it would be one plus a handicap is what they're looking at? So then we So then we need to completely change that so that we don't reference it?
Yep.
Because I know that we talk about commercial and that commercials are appraised on income. Our short-term rentals, and Darren, this is your alley, I don't believe are being appraised on income. They're being appraised as a a house. They're not registered as a commercial business. But I think that is actually some some good insight in this meeting that we need to completely take that out and rework it. And and one, make it either like a flat, two parking, no vegetation, no
Yep.
Um, and then also, I I do think we need to look at the permitting. Um, I can follow up with the Texas um Hotel Lodging Association and see if they're, that they can give us specific STR data. Hotel data is a wee bit easier. Um, we know that they're out there and we do have, like you said, that seventy to eighty that are actually complying. But we're noticing, because we have the parking concerns and we've had these discussions, we feel like some of them are not compliant.
I can tell you from personal experience that the Lodging Association will definitely get you the overlay map and those averages that we were talking about. Um, you would literally have to like go in on the map and be like, it's right there, you know? You don't get, yeah, oh, yeah. And I I did that up in Fort Davis too. Uh, but um, I think going and getting a private contractor is just going to just suck all this money away.
I agree.
And uh, and we're kind of losing even more from this.
Yep.
Uh, but yeah.
Okay, Councilmember Stevens?
Uh, so those are my good points. Darren, thanks for bringing it up, because it's been a festering thing there, so thanks for getting it back on the table. It would be nice to come to closure. It'd also be nice to have some proposals on the table we can look at and say, this, yes, this, no, this, yes, this, no, and get on with it. Because the other point I'd make is if we have an ordinance, we need to follow it or chuck it. And that's been my frustration, particularly because I've got, I know there's one operating in Row Five that's illegal, uh, because they don't already parking, and they park in the grass. Uh, and I look and say, we need to take action on that.
And pretty much most of the ones on the south are gonna not truly be compliant because they are parking on the street and and they're not parking on the actual, because there isn't actual parking for most of those.
Yeah, and so it's, I don't think it's a one-size-fits-all. The other part is that parking, we do need some flexibility and craft it in such a way that it recognizes those on the south side may not have parking, and how do we accommodate that? Where there is parking, how do we accommodate that as well? Now he's got to figure it out, is Robert, because he's got, you know, with code enforcement, a way that makes sense for him and for for just
So I know that they would look at the parking from the finance side, back compliance, and and that comes out of you and then finance's office. Like I said, there's three departments who are really intertwined with this whole process.
So I'm not sure I'd help the discussion, but those are kind of the parameters that I see we've got to get work. It'd be nice for you to move.
Councilmember Escamato?
Um, I see Rick's, some of his points and also uh Reagan's points. Um, I don't believe that we needed a third-party at all. I, the fees we could do without that um in order so they could become more compliant. And the other part is a problem. I mean, even for people that aren't uh short-term rentals. So those are my thoughts on that.
Okay.
Can I, sorry, can I get clarification, Councilor Escamato? You know permit fees?
No, she didn't say that.
Oh, that's why, so. What were you, and fees, were you talking about the third-party fee?
Right.
I just want to make sure my notes are correct.
Yeah.
All right, Councilmember Alavas?
Yeah, my my first question is how long we have been charging that three hundred and fifty dollars?
Since twenty twenty, when this was, twenty twenty-one, when this was implemented.
Okay, uh, I don't think that we can go higher because we cannot uh compare with Marfa. Uh, the income in Marfa is different than Alpine, and what we want is to get in, not not to be scared and not to pay, so I don't think that is a good idea to raise that the um the year. And I don't, I agree that we don't need a third-party to 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 come and and help. And uh, my other question is, if they don't have the two parkings, do they get a permit anyway to be Airbnb? Who 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 does those permits?
So miscommunication between councils. For the first couple of years, all the applications for STRs were being approved. When council switched over, the question became, are they compliant? Are we just approving? Parking was the situ, the issue. It was called out, it was noted that this person wasn't compliant with our guideline. And that's where we started having the conversation with changing this that's been going on for probably a year. Um, specifically, we've allowed it, but now we're we're enforcing. This is, goes back to Councilor Stevens' comments with either we enforce it or we get away, or do away with it. So your difficult question, because it's a yes and no. So yes, some of them were approved until it became a challenge and then we stopped approving.
It will be requirement from now on that they have to have two parkings.
So based on the current guideline, they have to have one for each uh sleeping unit and one for each five hundred square foot of common area. So they may need up to three or four parking spaces.
We got to get over that.
So that's where this needs to be changed, and we've had the conversation. Um, and actually tonight, I got a little bit more information to hopefully get you guys some options. Um, we're referencing a commercial, these are residential, we know we have this outside, it can't be a one-fit-all situation. Um, we'll go back to the drawing board, put something together and come back.
Yeah, yeah, I agree that we need to leave the say, yeah, this applied, this wouldn't apply, and just stick to that and apply or remove it from that.
And this will be easier for the building services department. I know we've had a couple different building officials. Miscommunication, it was approve, 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 there's nothing council could do, you have to approve them all. And then it was, well, they're not really compliant, so do I approve it? Well, this one does, but this one doesn't. So then it was kind of like, well, we're not going to approve it, we are going to approve it, so.
Well, thank you.
We're here today to to move on and
Okay, there you go, we need to move on.
Councilmember Nance?
Yes, I had uh three comments, I guess, on this. On the parking, the one thing I was going to mention is I understand the idea for kind of splitting that up and having two separate sides, because we're trying to please everybody. But the uh, on the devil's advocate on that, our residential parking requirement is standardized for the entire city, isn't it, Megan?
Yes, well, it's supposed to be.
Okay, so so matter if you've got a big house or a small house, doesn't really matter, your parking requirement is the same?
No, so the parking requirements are determined on how yours owns.
Okay, so basically R one, R two?
Yes, and I believe R three and R four might be different as well. Because they're more in the business area. So like, when you talk about your downtown, um, you get into your, well, not, those will be commercial. Commercial parking is different than residential, so if there are STRs in the downtown area, if we comply with our current zoning, theirs is even more unique.
Yep.
Okay, because I was thinking, uh, Andrew, the previous building, uh, is it building inspector or utilities director? I thought he had said everything was, there was only the one requirement for, which was one off-site um across the entire city. That's not correct?
I'm pulling up our ordinances. I think if we looked at it from a residential, most of them are correct, but when you get into places that can have apartments, it changes. Hold on.
That would make sense for anything like R, whatever the, whatever R zones are.
Yes, so it does fluctuate for the the different, but I think one and two are the same.
And is R one single-family zone?
Yes.
Yes.
So then that would go back to kind of my question, if you're single-family housing on, say, an eight hundred square foot lot, maybe on the south side, compared to a twenty-four hundred square lot up in Carpenter, those are going to have the same parking requirements?
Two seconds. The residential is one parking, off-street, one per unit minimum.
And what zone was that?
R two, R one reads the one off-street minimum.
Okay.
So R one reads one off-street minimum. R two reads off-street, one per unit minimum. R three reads off-street, one per unit minimum. R four reads off-street, one per unit minimum.
So anything with multi-units is required per unit?
Right.
And the R one is one off-street?
I'm seeing if we defined what a unit is.
And that would even make sense from an STR perspective, because if you had a house with a, you know, additional dwelling unit in the back, then, you know, you'd need your parking spot up in the front and you'd need an additional parking spot for the unit in the back. I'm assuming, or if you had two units and two additional parking spots.
Yeah, unit tends to be wrapped around individual dwelling units.
Bedroom means the living area of the dwelling unit that is designated, that's I don't think we clearly defined.
And then while you were looking that up, Megan, I was just going to mention to council, because I don't think the uh current council has some of the data that Mr. Stevens and I had from the previous council. Uh, Gio has, I think, seventy-five to eighty permitted short-term rentals in the city. I think that's what we have currently permitted. Even talking to Chris Rujia, when they do a sample or a guesstimate, they're thinking that we have upwards of a hundred and twenty-five um short-term rentals in the city. But the way uh we as a city try to, you know, make sure that they're um permitted, we may come in, you know, once a month or something like that, look at those websites such as Airbnb and, you know, VRBO and stuff like that and say, we know this one's permitted, we hope this is a new one, we haven't checked to make sure it's permitted. The third-party systems come in and and use AI and they check this, you know, twice a week or something like that. So if we're only doing it once a month, people could come in, do a short-term rental during spring break. We aren't aware, because we didn't spot-check it during spring break, so that's probably where those additional fifty units are coming, seventy-five to a hundred and twenty-five is one. We're just not catching in the intermediary, because they may be doing it during tourist hot times. Um, I did want to just mention too, it sounds like council's appetite is for no fee increase, they're happy with the three hundred and fifty and then the one hundred, and no third-party as well. Um, and on the third-party one, like, the only reason I think that that would make sense if we did move forward, we're trying to do Civic Plus Agenda software and it's taken a year to implement. I mean, it's been, you know, interesting. The last thing you want to do is if it only increases, the third-party software increases complexity and stuff like that, it's just going to create work instead of remove work, so. I'm I'm very agnostic on that one. And just wanted to state the last thing, kind of, on the perspective of this is the main goal uh by putting this on the agenda is really, I just want to kind of clean um clean up the language and the compliance so that people come forward with, that want to do short-term rentals. If we are holding them accountable uh according to the ordinances, and if we go to do a fine for someone that's not permitted and we catch them uh operating without a permit, we need to have everything, all our ducks in a row and and tied up before we ever try to do any accountability from the ordinance perspective. And that was everything.
One more.
Okay.
Just a couple of things to look up, noting that uh we do have strict regulations from the state sometimes around this is uh, we mentioned a sliding scale, which I would very be, you know, be really interested in seeing, wondering if that's legal. Um, and uh also, something that I think is just interesting is you look in a lot of communities, um, and also, if this is legal, I'm not a hundred percent sure, you know, we all travel, but putting your license number on the listing. And that would really help y'all if y'all were able to actually go on to just the the user side of Airbnb and you'd be able to see every listing, a license number, if we handed out a license, you know, in the next fiscal year or something. So that might help y'all with that too. The last thing I just wanted to note, if there really are a hundred and twenty-five out there um at at three hundred and fifty dollars a year, which I think we should just maybe stay constant and and but also, I I'd be like this, this sliding scale. Um, that's forty-three thousand dollars per city every year. That's that's not small pennies, that's that's an employee. Um, and so I think, you know, getting rid of this might, you know, might hurt us in some ways, but appreciate the time.
Okay, any other comments?
I just uh wanted to mention that at the renewal rate, that's only seven thousand five hundred for the seventy-five we have permitted. So really, it's not covering much on the renewal.
Okay, so maybe we should think about the renewal rate.
The rates, at least cover and sliding fees are pretty interesting, actually.
You know, I I um I do understand that Councilor Nance says, you know, maybe once a month, we're, if we're conducting these once a month, we're lucky. Like, I don't think we have the time to do it that often. So, um, hopefully, you know, an additional employee in the party department may be able to, you know, but it's hard to train doing it the way that we do, because I recognize that, I do it myself, and I I I aim to do it once a month, but we're not doing it that frequently. It just takes a lot. It's going through every listing, the fact that I'm doing it for rent, period, so.
And what did you say the cost of the third-party is? Have you looked?
Pretty pricey.
I think it was like twenty-four to thirty thousand.
But that was with everything, everything that they offer, like collection-wise, finance side, online payments. You can get um, you can get different modules.
Can you get one that mo, that monitors the websites to look for the non-registered STRs?
Yes, I believe so. Councilor Nance might be able to speak to that. We were both in a devil.
All right, Councilor Nance?
Um, I'm thinking, the the cost was twenty-five to thirty thousand, because when we were looking at it possibly tying those permit fees into something like that, if there was, um, you know, I don't want to workshop us to death, but if there was a workshop to get short-term rental um owners input on something, maybe we tie that into a presentation by one of these third-party companies and see if it does provide value to the STR owners.
We could create a survey, might be a neat idea, because we have all those emails of eighty-some-odd folks or, I guess, some way to contact them. And just uh, from my knowledge, Granicus was who we were looking at in Fort Davis, and the entry fee was about twelve to thirteen thousand dollars for just the basic of looking who's there and giving you a list. I think it was about every month or so.
Uh, so, uh, were you doing this when you were at the Chamber of Commerce?
Yeah, we we uh are the ones that get the, we're we're like the tourism of the city of Alpine, so we got half of the uh hotel occupancy taxes from the county. So that was our incentive, was to try to help them collect it.
I believe it, the way Fort Davis is set up is the same way we used to be, where the chamber and visitor center were tied together.
Yeah.
And so it was partially sponsored to cover the
And we talked one time, I know, being like, hey, would y'all be down to split this twelve thousand dollars with us? And it just obviously went nowhere at that time, but yeah.
All right, anything else?
Mayor, I have one quick question for Mr. Stone. Did Fort Davis require any permit fees, or what was their revenue structure to cover the cost of a third-party?
So we were going to have a, it was going to be all brand-new rules, similar to what y'all have currently. There is no compliance at all. And and I think that still exists today. So there there is a, there is a tax or a hotel occupancy tax out there that is not enforced. It is voluntarily, volun voluntary to to pay it, which it kind of, it's a voluntary tax.
All right, anything else?
I mean, I'm thinking that we need somebody else to help, uh, like Gio, maybe we can bring in the visitor subject to come here, kind of, come and help you, and you delegate whatever.
And they have a task, Heather has helped here and there. But sometimes they've gotten quite busy and haven't been able to help, it's extensive. So I agree, that's great.
Does Chris provide answers?
Yes, but he's more focused on the numbers. Heather's been the one helping on it.
Okay.
He's looking at the big picture.
Yep.
And they're looking at the, who's underneath that.
Gotcha, okay.
All right. And with that, we're gonna take a short five-minute break, because we're coming up on the hour mark. Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, and we're back from break at six twenty-five PM. All right, discussion item number B. Discuss proposed charter amendments and reach a general consensus on the proposed changes plan moving forward and process to get to November election. So for those of you who just joined us, and not all of you are brand-new council members, this is something that's been going on for a couple of months, it takes a little bit of time. The city charter, as you know, we're a home rule charter city. It was adopted May first of nineteen ninety-three, and technically, charters should be, not always does it happen, updated every two years, because that's how often the state legislature meets, so that anything that might be illegal in charter can be removed. And they started out with good intentions in May of nineteen ninety-five, exactly two years later, they amended it. Then it was May of two thousand and five, and then that was it. All right, so council had started on the process of going through the charter and making amendments. The goal is to have it on the November ballot, because the thought is, with the presidential election, there will be more people at the ballot. They'll be there, they can, they'll have on their ballot the proposed amendments. And so that's the goal. Now, that sounds a long time away, but it is not. So it needs to be to our attorney here July, right, July?
Actually, I have in my notes that after today's meeting, I will be forwarding it to the legal team to serve.
Okay, all right, so, because they need about a month, and then it's due to the state by August, was it eighteenth?
We have to call the election by August sixth.
Okay, so see, that's not a lot of time. And anyway, so council, prior to you guys coming on, has gone through this several times. We have a lot of adjustments that we have made. I hope you have had the opportunity to work through the packet and look at them, so we can expedite the discussion, and Megan and Gio will know what to send to the city attorneys. Previous council went through these. I believe most of them were approved by the majority of the council at that time, but we are a new council, so we need your guys' input, so that we can get this to the legal team. All right, so let's start with Councilmember Albus.
About this point?
Yeah, about any of the propositions.
Oh, I read all the propositions, and, like you said, it's all new for us, so they, I like the changes, because it's more understanding and more practical, so I think the changes, they're right.
Okay, all right. One of the things I did not type up, because we're trying to figure out if we're, the less amendments we have on the ballot, probably the better. We don't want to hand the residents a ballot that has thirty amendments on it, they have to go through. And in our current city charter, they use the word district several places, whereas we're wards. And so we have reached out to the legal team to see if we can just make one amendment that will encompass all of those changes for all the different ones, city manager.
So as part of tomorrow's follow-up, I also have requested assistance in following or creating propositions for the change in terms, because we've got the issue with the year conflicts, the conduct of city council or sanctions, the comprehensive plan, and a single proposition to remove district to ward.
Okay.
I didn't want to, I wanted to send it all at once.
Right.
Instead of doing piece by piece by piece.
Right.
Send them everything at once.
Well, that makes sense, otherwise it might get confusing. Did you have anything else that you wanted to add?
Those are the only ones that were on mine.
Okay, I do have a question. One of the changes says that your council will be three years, so when would it will be effective?
It would be effective with yours and Lucy's term. Right, correct, yeah.
You guys would be here for three years. So that's why we wanted, I have that to follow up with them.
Thank you for the notice.
All the research I had, unfortunately, I lost. I was able to recover one city that had made a term change, but it didn't quite provide that detail the others had. So that's where we'll get the attorney's guidance to make sure we don't, we don't have you sitting there for five years.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So we would be very grateful.
Is that, is that legal to extend the current term, or would it be the next time they're elected? I don't know.
That's where we want the legal guidance. A lot of cities had it outlined, where, so when you, if you were two-year, you ended up with that third year, and then you went for election. Some of them had it where you were two-year, you only served the one, and then had to go for the three. They were all structured a little bit differently. So getting the legal guidance to make sure we outline it correctly.
So the next election, so maybe it will be for three years?
If they say it's legal. Yeah, so we're not trying to approve this tonight, we're just trying to get it to the legal team, so they can tell us what is legal and is not legal.
Or to put the language in place that is
Right, yeah.
But this also has to be approved by the residents, so the citizens of Alpine actually have to approve this. They may approve Proposition A and then none of the others. They may approve four of them, but not the rest. So each one is a different proposition. It's not an all or nothing, it's individual.
Just like we recently had that, or I believe it was the Texas Constitution, it was on a ballot, and we had each, there were nineteen of them, I believe, each individual one, the citizens of Texas had to approve.
And they're not blanket, you can't just check a box for all.
Right, that's why we were saying, we don't want thirty of them on the ballot. Because nobody's gonna go to vote and have thirty propositions to read in the legal language that they have to be written in. So we will also have to have, I would imagine, education-type announcements to the public, maybe some workshops where they can come in and ask questions, because you have all this stuff written in legal language, and we're like, what is that?
Yeah.
Yeah.
And I couldn't understand any, just that three years was, like, wow.
Yes, okay, okay. Councilmember Nance?
Yes, I had a couple of comments on a few of these. We already, like, we did go discuss these with the previous council, and I think I would just like to share some of the previous council stuff with the new council. The E, item E, moving that to a three-year term, I think Mr. Stevens and I, you can correct me if I'm wrong, we were perfectly fine with just leaving it with the two-year terms, and not really seeing any need to extend that to three or four. At least me, that's where I, my mind's at, is the two-year term is perfectly fine. On item B, which is the review period for the city charter, personally, I think five years is pretty often. I know you had mentioned two for legislation, and legislation does change every two years. But when I did research, I couldn't find anybody that did it that often. I mean, there's, it's not uncommon to find people that have not updated their charters, unfortunately, for a long time. And I think we had mentioned possibly ten-year review period on that. And then item K is the muni judge term, so if we leave terms as two years on item E, there should be no necessary change on item K for a two-year term. That was the end of the comments.
I want to mention, the reason the terms were kept at three years for you guys to review, because the other three council members liked the three-year term idea. The idea is, it takes you about a year to get your feet under you and understand what's going on at the city, what you can and can't do, what our role is. And then the next year, you're busy campaigning again, and it's hard to get any of the items that you have run on, such as maybe an STR or a review of a city charter. It's hard to get any of that passed within two years. That was one of the things I wanted to do, was update the charter, and now I'm in year three. So that's why we were thinking a three-year term would be acceptable, because it take, you have that learning curve. And so that's why that is still on there. And then the review, the review doesn't have to be extensive. I pretty much took this on, because Megan and Gio are so busy, and so I took it on to write the amendments and to try to figure out what the legal language was. And we'll see when the lawyers get it, how well I did. So to review it, you can just, you correct me if I'm wrong, Megan, you can just have a committee do it, of volunteers, of residents, or you can have a temporary board that is established to do it. It doesn't necessarily have to be the city manager, or the city secretary, or one of us that does it, so it's not that difficult to go in and look and see what needs to be changed. A five-year term, you've already had two meetings of the state legislature. And just to go in and see, is there anything, is, we took everything out about annexations, because that's all illegal now in our charter, all of that's illegal, so all that had to come out. It'd be real easy for a group of people to say, well, the legislature four years ago just passed this, and then this year they just passed this, so these items need to come out. Or they can look at it as a review and say, it's good, you're fine. So, member Stone?
I'm feeling out on what you're speaking about, I think, you know, the biggest thing is, you're right on the education. I would hope we put something behind it in a social media campaign, trying to first advertise the votes in some ways. It's really easy to spend a hundred bucks and hit every single person that's on social media in this community. And I think that's a great way to be able to reach potential voters. To add on here, I got no problem going along with extending these two lovely council members time periods that they can serve, you know, if they're willing to do that.
And if it's legal.
And if it's legal, of course. With that, I'll even take it a step further. I would love to hear some thoughts on moving city elections to November. I know that there has been some talk in the past, city elections are horribly turned out. I'll be honest, in my past election, it was noted up here on the dais that it was, you know, some pretty low turnout. It was near fourteen percent, which is pretty darn good, compared to, you know, Harris County and Houston, it was less than one percent at their city election. Go ahead, Megan, I'm sorry.
Legislation, the legislation has to improve us to move to a
You're right, we talked about that.
Yeah, we can't put it as a charter.
Yeah, so maybe that's something we can bring in January, if we want to discuss that at another time. Maybe now is not the best time for that.
Actually, now would be a good time, because if that's the direction you want to go.
It needs to start now.
Yeah, we have to get a congressman or representative, someone on board to bring it before legislation. TML's process is due by August for any support from that organization. And so.
And I'm working on some legislation on my day job occasionally too, and some advocacy for that, and we've already had representatives say it needs to be turned in last week, which is pretty crazy. I mean, when I was at the Capitol, there's twenty people in Ledge Council, and, you know, they have five thousand bills come up, so, yeah, it's nuts.
So that's something you're interested in.
So maybe if y'all wanted to give your thoughts on November election, I mean, obviously, it can't happen this time, but I was to the point of being like, I would be happy to be stepping down in November. Not that I don't want to be here, but I want to make what's right for the city, and that's the same way that I want to make sure that we're advertising these changes, is so that it's easy, that they're all yes, they're all yes, is that's the way we should be advertising that, because we're making these changes the right ones for the residents, the community. Besides November election and discussion, I hope that other council members will talk about here, is I'm also interested in increasing, or rather, putting some sort of pay for the council and the mayor, and I want to remind everyone here that that pay for anybody up here would not be able to go into effect until the next, as far as I know, until the next time we all take a seat here, if it's us. And so, and again, noting if that's legal, if we need the ability to do that or not. But I'd be interested, these are, you know, in some ways volunteer positions, and I know all of us, you know, and a couple of weeks ago or last week, we all spent nearly, probably about, you know, fifteen to twenty hours working on this, so I'm hoping, and the reason behind that is because, you know, we might have some retirees up here, but we also have working professionals up here, and we have other folks that deserve to have a right to be able to be on this council, and so if they're taking a lot of time out of their their day, I want to make sure that we're able to have And so if they're taking a lot of time out of their their day, I want to make sure that we're able to have representation of people that have jobs. And aren't necessarily just retirees.
Let me remind you to please stay quiet in the council chambers. Okay, I believe that we did have that as a charter amendment, but the council prior to. You guys was unanimous in saying that they wanted to keep pay as an ordinance. Am I correct in saying that?
That's correct, it is an ordinance.
So we can, yeah, you can actually put it on uh in general.
Okay, yeah, cool. Just learn and hear things. And and I guess the only thing that I'm interested to hear then is, uh, you know, a November election and and uh. Seeing if a representative might sponsor a bill like that.
Is it something you're willing to work?
Be happy to look at that, yeah.
All right, council member Escobedo.
The only one that I see a question is on proposition F. On the four excuses, absences and three unexcused from a regular council meeting. And removing that. City council uh and vacating that seat. I don't think we need that. Because my thoughts are just because a a council member is here for whatever reason. That doesn't mean that they should be vacated because we we don't know what's going on.
Alright, so uh the previous council, once again, that was a council that was split. And the reason we decided to keep that is because our boards and commissions. They can only have three absences before they are removed from their seat. And for example, council member Nance is counted present, so he's not absent because he's on Zoom. So we have additional technology that enables us to zoom in so that we don't have to meet. And if you have a council member that starts to miss that many meetings. Then they're not able to represent their citizens as well because their voice is not being heard. And at that point, that council member should consider stepping down. So that was the reason that that was retained for us to look at. And we don't want to police ourselves. We don't want to say. Oh, well, you were really unexcused. You really weren't sick that day or you really didn't have to work late that day or. We don't want to have to police ourselves because we all have to work together. And so that's why it was four excused absences. For that uh, that time period. I mean, we might want to put in there, oh, it is for one fiscal year. So how many times do we meet in a fiscal year? We meet twice a month typically, except for December. So that's uh, what is it, twenty-three? Yeah, twenty-three.
Did the uh, the November change? Is that all? I remember that being brought up at some point that they.
We didn't.
Didn't agree on it.
Yeah, I think last year we just canceled the meeting because it was the week of Thanksgiving and we weren't going to end up with a.
And we can't refuse that as it is, yeah.
Not that I see.
Councilmember Stevens.
So I think less is more. I think eleven is too many. Uh, and I struggle with the addition of seven point nine on there. That would be twelve. Uh, because I think we're all in agreement that we have a lot of education to do. Uh, and regardless of what the outcome is, I believe we do need simple language. Uh, to help explain the rationale why we're doing any of them. So I think that's going to be important. A lot of people are on social media, I am not. I refuse to use it because I see too many things that are incorrect. So, and I know. My word, we have to get information out to people. So I think having a voter's guide is important, number one. Uh, number two, uh. It it, as I kind of looked at these and wondered said, which are the ones that we gotta go do? Uh, and which are the ones that would be nice to do? It's not clear to me that proposition A is required. We have the ability to go look and do and we charter review. It's not clear to me that putting in charter is that causes us to go do it. I I can't believe that's my view. There are a lot of things in the charter we look at and some, we don't follow our own ordinance. So part of my reaction is. Putting in the charter may be helpful, it's just so. Uh, if I was looking at it, say proposition is interesting, I can live with it. Uh, but I don't think it is a necessary change to the uh, to the charter.
And then proposition D, if we're able to make it as. One overarching proposition war districts towards, then proposition D would be there. Yeah, hopefully we can do that.
Hopefully do that, that'd be one of what was eleven or twelve. Uh, proposition B. Uh, that's aligned with, got a picture of charter to be aligned with state law. So to me, that's a no-brainer. Uh, and that's an easy thing to sell. Uh, same with proposition C, an easy no-brainer, so. Uh, proposition D, we just talked about that. Hopefully it's going to be one and be done without. And people want to say, yep, we call them wards, we don't call them districts. Proposition E, I'm, I happen to be a view of a two-year person. Uh, it's going to be three years or three years. Uh, and uh, so I'm comfortable the way that it is. And but if council wants to take it out to go look and say, oh, two, three-year terms. Or three, two-year terms to me. And frankly, my view about campaigning Alpine. It's a month and campaign's over. Uh, so we're not spending, we're not like we're in the House of Representatives where it is literally every other year. Uh, out campaigning all the time. So it's not clear to me that E is required. Uh, proposition F, I would take it out. I think we already have language in our ordinances to talk about missing meetings. I, Mayor, I I understand we don't want to self-police ourselves. Uh, but if someone's got four excused absences, it's legitimate. And I would have a hard time us penalizing someone if they're truly excused. Uh, then uh, I I'd make it ten. I get the representation. Uh, the three unexcused, we already have the ability to take action if there are three unexcused absences. I don't believe saying four excuse absences buys me much in terms of discussion. Someone's not showing up. We had to have the discussion, otherwise we shouldn't be in these seats. Relative to uh proposition G, uh, makes sense. That's an easy one, that could be good clarification there. Proposition H, uh, I'm comfortable with that because we've run into those issues. Proposition I. Uh, that lines up. Uh, and that fits in as well. I'm good with I J. Uh, it fixes an issue we've had, so I'm comfortable with that. Uh, proposition K, I'm comfortable with that, I can refer to the uh, the mayor. Uh, and proposition, then the next one is a comprehensive city plan. Yeah, we should have a comprehensive city plan, but we're supposed to have a comprehensive comprehensive plan for city, for the airport. For our roads, for our streets. And in in my mind, uh, putting that in the charter. Then we need to put a whole bunch of plans in the charter. That's my view as opposed to a single comprehensive plan. So. I think we need to have them. That ought to be one of the items we put on another agenda when council comes together. What's the status? What are we going to work on? Uh, and then, of course, we got to refund them all. It's all going to come out of the budget somewhere. There's not been an airport plan done in forever. Thanks to Megan, we're now finally working it. I remember when I put a hanger out there, I had to go to T C E Q to put a hanger, put two hangers in the airport in order to get approval for a septic tank. I had to get the eleven deeds associated with the airport because no one in the city had it. And order to do that, I wouldn't got it. I I just don't think it buys us anything, but I do think that's something we do need to do. It's just not clear to me it ought to be in the charter, so. Whatever that's worth, those are my thoughts. As always, Catherine, I thank you for putting this thing together because you've done a hell of a lot of work on it. Five or six of them is probably right. And I think every time the legislature needs, this council, I'm looking to say, what's changed? Better work our way through, get the language out and go work it.
Okay, then so make so that Megan knows what to send to the attorneys. I want to start first. With councilmember Nance, your thoughts on having the comprehensive plan so that we can get a feel for how council feels about it?
Uh, yes, the comprehensive plan, basically that was brought in after going to a T M L conference. And we, Megan and I met A J Farr, who was a, she's a consultant. And she's done the comprehensive plan for Sweetwater, which is phenomenal plan. It's based a lot on strong towns as well, which is one reason why. First count conference I went and I I wanted to talk back with her again. She explained the difference between strategic plans and comprehensive plans, how long they live, uh, a little bit of cost of them and everything else. And Sweetwater, I think, is a couple of years ahead of us as far as kind of getting a comprehensive plan, enacting that comprehensive plan, cleaning their ordinances. So it was under her kind of direction and tutelage to, um, that she said the city. Put this requirement within their city charter, council put it within their city charter to make sure that council turnover. Uh, didn't change any of the things within this plan. Uh, by putting that within the actual city charter, it required them to have a um comprehensive plan and to also review it once every three years. Uh, so that was kind of the the reasoning behind putting it in there.
Okay, councilmember Stone, in regards to the comprehensive plan?
Can we remind me which proposition that is?
Uh, it hasn't been written, it's on the back page, uh, but Darren did include some emails.
Uh, that's the email.
The emails, yeah. So the question is, do we want it in the charter or no? Basically, and any questions you have or any of council or Megan or Gio.
Y'all give me a little, Megan, you might give me a little background, what the difference between a comprehensive plan and a strategic plan are.
Strategic plans are more short-term.
Okay.
To address critical issues, um, very checklist.
Sure.
The comprehensive plan is a much broader, we're looking at the entire city. And it would incorporate all of your other individual plans. It would also incorporate all of your zoning. So the reason why I know Darren and I both talked about it and I've talked to other cities. Is we have these zoning issues coming before the council, where council has to make a decision. If we had a comprehensive plan, it outlines the direction in which the city wants to go. So you know, our commercial district is basically the two one ways. If we wanted to extend it other directions or include new development, it could be part of the comprehensive plan. So then it's not a spot zone, it's not coming to council, it's included as part of our comprehensive plan. It also addresses mobility, it addresses growth, it addresses housing, it addresses our infrastructure. Um, it's not a one-year project. Um, it is a, let's get it off the ground and let's let's. Move a direction so that the city has all the data. This is the pretty bow. All the other comprehensive plans go into this. So we're, Mr. Uh. Stevens mentioned the airport. We did not have one. And we did do a street condition study. We have done a park master plan. And we're working on a small system, um, wastewater. Not really a comprehensive study, but something that could help. So we're doing the little pieces. This would hopefully title.
Megan, would this be a job of city staff or could this also be a job of perhaps like the uh. Uh, charter itself, if we did that every five years, could that also be. A ad hoc committee or some that, someone that we bring up to be able to work on this.
So this would be something we would go out for a firm. That would help us, but this is huge public involvement. This is town halls, this is workshops. This is getting groups together. Um, this is the vision plan, bringing this into the comprehensive. This is everything. Um, so like I said, it's not short-term, um, but they would have the ability to analyze and kind of take what the public is saying, what council's direction is saying. These aren't, these aren't short-term. So I believe Sweetwater's is till twenty-four or twenty-fifty. These are very long-term. Strategic plan is kind of what I was trying to attempt to do on a uh infrastructure. But when I look at infrastructure as a strategic plan, I've got like a fifteen. Um, that's what.
Looks like a lot more like a comprehensive plan. Okay, well, um. You know, uh, without necessarily having, you know, I I guess my other question is, is is there available grants for something that can pay for this as well or?
So I've reached out to the Real Ground Council Government, um, and there used to be. The application isn't open at this moment, but there's a Department of Agricultural. That may be able to assist us. The last time we had this done, it was on my.
Sure, okay.
Um, so if we could apply and get everything to them and then we met the requirements, they may be able to help us. So yes, there are available grants.
Yeah.
I just wouldn't want to put all of our eggs in that basket.
Sure, yeah. And so the, my thoughts on this is I'd be okay leaving this up to the voters. Honestly, you know, they're the ones that are going to decide, you know, including the the idea of like, is for unexcused absences or not. They can elect you, they can take you out of office just as much as they can put you in office. So I think leaving this up to voters would be a good idea. Um, with that as well, I I I really think that, um. You know, noting that this has been paid for by a grant before, I'm I'm cool with, you know, not spending more money. Um, and uh, you know, the voters are are the folks that are saying that we need to fix all these water pipes. That we need to have a total new system, all these things. So they want that, they need to put their their vote behind this too. And and so I urge everybody to go out and vote and say, we want a comprehensive plan. We want to look at ways. Whether however we can pay for it to be able to fix all of these infrastructure problems. So, um, I'm I'm willing to say that this should go before voters.
Okay. So that's a yes for it being in the charter. Okay, council.
I agree that it's being the charter, so not only for assets new or city council, this information for the officials, what they're coming. And then all the worst, we can be in the same uh, information, you know, I was in the planning zone and it was like, okay. You go to the city, you know, I go to the planning. So if this is the charter with all the information, it would be easy to take decisions and all agree on the same. And I just like a ping pong jumping from one side to the other one. It would be informative, but I think it should be in the charter.
Okay, then councilmember Nance, I'm willing to guess you want it in the charter still. Yes, okay. Councilmember Escobedo.
When was the last time it was done?
Um, two thousand? Two thousand and one. So we have found bits and pieces of a comprehensive.
So that makes it not a comprehensive.
Like maps for different things, um. So it looks like they tried, it's been called a planning study. Um, that one came out in two thousand and one in March, which has actually came out in twenty thousand and one, there's a typo. Um, that was a planning study from two thousand and one to two thousand and five. This is what created the need to go out for like our street condition study. Um, because the planning study or this comprehensive plan had kind of a, you should do this within these ten years. You should do this within these five years. Based on what I've provided, we didn't.
And there's usually firms that do these, is that what you're saying, usually it's?
So we've only spoken to one and and we've spoken to, I've spoken to other cities and a lot of cities, uh, Sugarland just did a big. And yes, most of these cities have more revenue and kind of they have a a bigger population base. But just looking at at the direction they're going and and they start with the basic. So we start with the basic the first year and we get a basic comprehensive plan to know the direction we want to go, which we all kind of do know what direction we want to go. Um, we would have to go for a request for qualifications or proposals to see what other firms would be interested. Um, we're unique. We are in rural West Texas. So I'm foreseeing the cost not to be within a Sugarland budget or within a Sweetwater budget. Um, but more with, you know, what we have. And we have a bunch of studies, I mean, a vision plan from sixteen that, you know. Provided good information, a street condition study. Um, they would include some some housing, you know, how do we dress, what direction? Um, they include um, our park system, but they include all the aspects of our city. And like I said, the the public participation is going to be the key to it. And it is one of my goals for the year, just to initiate this process. But I I think it's important. Because like I said, I've got the one here and it's all about the water system and the inventory and. All this information, I'm kind of like, where's the next step? So I I think it's just something, I mean, cities are going this direction and a lot of them have done it for years.
I mean, I do think we definitely need it. Uh, I don't think it needs to be part of the charter. I think that should be something that, you know, the city manager. Says, you know, hey, I'm going to start working on this, this is what we need to do and let's give her directions if we need to. Says, you know, hey, I'm going to start working on this. This is what we need to do and let's give her directions if we need to.
Okay, Councilmember Stevens?
Yeah, my view is, I think we're in alignment. We need a comprehensive plan. The question doesn't need to be in the charter. I'm looking right now. Title seven subtitle A, chapter two thirteen, state law adopted nineteen ninety seven. Uh, and it was updated in two thousand and one. Talks about comprehensive plans. Uh, and it says, no municipality, because it contains specifically to municipalities may adopt it by, in its charter or by ordinance. So we can do it either way. It also says down at the bottom, it says, a map of a comprehensive plan illustrating future land use shall not, shall contain the following clearly visible statement. A concert comprehensive plan shall not constitute zoning regulations. Or establish zoning district boundaries. So if our intent is to try and look and say, what's our future land use, that says we can't do it. So it's, I do think it's one thing that we ought to do. We ought to have it. We ought to update it. I am concerned about cost. You know, when we did the vision plan in two thousand and sixteen, we got UTSA to go do it. They paid for all of it out of the Small District Development Center. Uh, and, uh, but I do think it is not going to be a trivial expense for us to go do it. But do believe we need it. I just don't think it needs to be in the chart. That's my thing, but.
Okay.
Could there be, uh, any, um, type of compromise here if we're amending the charter every five years? Could it be every five years that we look at a comprehensive plan? Because as, uh, the manager rightly said, you know, this is a fifteen, thirty year plan. So why do we need to do it every three years? You know, maybe five years might be, uh, something that is more in line with the charter review as well. Uh, but at the same time, I think we ought to give our way, uh, ourselves an out here too. Because if we make a, a, a plan here, you know, next year or the year after, whatever that might look like. Give us some time to, to, to implement it and be able to, to see it through rather than. Uh, is this holding us to making a whole new plan and paying somebody every three years? Or is it, can we look at it and be like, okay, that's cool. We're in the right direction. Let's move on. Um, and that's, that would be my only concern there. So maybe there's some wiggle room to even get some more consist, consensus on this, uh, some compromise here too.
Yeah, a- a- along those lines, the section, you know, two thirteen dot zero three says, a conference plan may be adopted or amended by ordinance. Following at that hearings and review the municipal municipalities plans commissioned or department if one exists. A municipality may establish in its charter by ordinance procedures for adopting and amending a comprehensive plan. I would just hope what we're going to do, let's think about what our processes to manage this as opposed to saying. We're not going to legislate it or require it by the charter. Now, what's our process to your point? It's a frequency to update, we're, we're, we really struggle. We have ordinance, as we have looked at in twenty years.
Seventy six, so this longer.
Yeah.
Every fifteen years, every, you know, what is it?
I just don't think it's got to be part of charter. I would think it'd be nice for us to say, hey, in the budget. Let's allocate money to go develop a comprehensive plan or a way to go work it. That'd be terrific for me.
And this is more putting some, you know, ties on the people that sit up here to say, hey, you got to keep looking at it.
Yeah.
Uh, which I, I, I like to some point, but at the same time, I, I'm still for that we can leave this up to the voters. I think we can make it a little better by saying five, ten years, something like that, so that we can actually see, see a plan through in some ways, but.
What if the voters say no?
It's true.
Then we're not going to have a comprehensive plan. I think that would be foolhardy on our part.
But we could still make one through ordinance.
So are we wasting our time?
Yeah.
To go forward, because if we get an answer we don't like, then it's like, oh, we're going to do it anyway.
Yeah.
That seems like kind of dumb to me.
Yeah.
All right, so, so that Megan, was there anything you wanted to add?
I just want to go.
Okay, so we know whether she should send this to the attorney's, uh, charter or not.
I'm not okay with the three years.
Okay, but do you want that changed?
I, I could, I could go with, um, every ten years.
Okay, on the charter?
Yes.
We need a comprehensive, um, you know, but, uh, I'm, I'm like Rick say, so, um. What do they say? No.
We'd still have one by ordinance, like Rick said, yeah. So charter or no?
Uh, no.
Okay, charter or no? Charter or no?
No, but I'll help write the ordinance. I really will. Yeah.
Darren, charter or no?
I would prefer it to be in the charter. When we look at ordinance versus charter, all we're ba- basically saying is. If you put it in the charter, then it goes to the voters. And I'm assuming if you remove it from the charter, it has to go to the voters. So it's just more difficult to ever remove the review and the addition of a, a comprehensive plan. I think it just edifies the process more if it's in a charter. Um, I'm perfectly fine with an ordinance as well. I prefer it in the charter. But, and then I just wanted to mention too, because everyone's co- completely correct when we look at these and say, it's not going to be cheap. I mean, Megan could speak to this. We have a master parks plan. What was that? Thirty to forty thousand dollars, I think? The vision plan, you know, um, we're doing a tech stock mobility plan. That was going to be two hundred and forty thousand. We only pay, uh, twenty percent of that cost, so it's going to be forty thousand. So anytime we plan, these are absolutely going to be large costs that we have to incur. And I think from the city's perspective, the comprehensive plan, even, I looked at it and read the, um, KSA, the paving plan we have. And kind of not the whole thing, but looking in there, it does a bunch of fascinating thing where it does simple ratings on all the streets. And talks about if it's a seven through a ten, then we need a chip seal. If it's a five point five and below, then we need complete, um, rebuilds. And mills on these streets. So we have all that data in there and all these studies, we're really good at getting the studies. But we're bad about auditing ourselves and checking our progress on them and everything else. So I think, I don't know if comprehensive plan, at some point, we do need. A review process, whether it's the comprehensive plan that comes back and checks on all these other plans. Because I think we're good at getting plans. We're just, you know, the follow up, uh, drops sometimes.
The information you need?
If I might make one more comment, this is going to be the point where I say we should hire in-house again, even though this is huge stuff. If we're spending two hundred thousand dollars here and then forty thousand dollars here, we could hire three, five people in an office. And that's our comprehensive plan office and they create comprehensive plans by our guidance. And they're coming to you and being like, hey, they're, they're another accountability officer in some way. They're, they're keeping us on the plan. Um, uh, and I'm just going to float that. I know that's a lot bigger of a, a, a move than we're looking at here tonight. But, you know, that might be an idea for people that might be up here for three years more than me, so. But I appreciate that. Thank you.
Sure. All right, do you have the information you need?
Not really.
Okay, so go ahead and ask what question you.
Yes, we need it, but no, real, it's a split really between you guys with, do we want to move forward with having the attorneys? Put something together. So I, I, I'll make a judgment call and say we can do it by ordinance. Um, uh, we need one, whether it's on the charter. I like the charter because it is harder to, to change.
Be happy to send an email to you tomorrow that we can put this on the agenda for two weeks from now to discuss a comprehensive plan by ordinance. It's a priority, I, I, and yeah. Yeah, okay, yeah.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay, and I all have to read out and have the ordinance.
Okay, good deal. All right, so let's go back to A. Do we want A on there or do we just want to take it off so there's less for the voters? A was. Was to look at the charter every five years. So, do we keep?
I'm cool with it.
You want to keep?
Yeah.
Okay, you want to keep or remove? Okay, Darren, keep or remove?
Keep, I mean, my, I would prefer for it to be ten years, but I think it is important to have a re- review process.
Okay, all right, so three, three say yes, uh, just to continue, Escobedo?
Um, remove it.
Okay, and Stevens?
So we got to keep it. I'd go to ten.
Yeah.
What do you feel about that, Mayor?
I think ten's too long.
Yeah.
Really?
Yeah.
Yeah, it doesn't take that much work to go through and review it.
Yeah.
When we say, sorry to interrupt, when we say it doesn't take a lot of work, we do have to get a, a committee of citizens and stuff every time we review it. And we already have issues getting advisory boards.
We don't have to have committee. We're reviewing it right now and we don't have a committee.
I would just offer, we have probably spent thirty hours on this in council, when you spend countless beyond that. It is taking us away from doing the things that we as council have been asked to go do. Fix the roads, fix the water, fix the wastewater, keep employees. So we have consumed a lot of time. That's why I think we had to look at it, but. Uh, we'll, we'll spend a lot of time on it. So that's why I look and say, wow.
We have spent a lot of time on it, but I wouldn't say it was thirty hours. But yeah, we have spent a lot of time.
Actually, no, it's, Mary, it really has been.
Has it?
No.
Okay.
Yeah, and I'm concerned without pay for the people that are sitting up here that have full-time jobs or have families and other things like that as well. But, um, you know, I still think that it's really important to look at this. I agree with you. So I'm going to stand by that. Five or ten is, is cool with me.
Okay, five or ten?
Five.
Five or ten?
Ten.
Five or ten?
Ten.
Darren, five or ten?
Ten years.
Okay, so I think that it would be ten years. Okay, for A. All right, and there was a couple others. Let's see.
I have a question, just a smaller, I'm just curious, before when the charter was done, that, you know, back then, who, who worked on it?
That was done by a. Yeah, back in, what, ninety-three, ninety-five and two thousand and five? Yeah, okay. Is there something? See, no, Steve was okay. All right, vote, vote was E. So we needed a vote on E. Um, and E, if y'all would look at proposition E, it's for the three-year term. All right, did you support on the charter three years?
Yeah, I'm, I'm okay with that.
Three years on the charter? Three years on the charter?
Yes.
Three years on the charter?
Oop.
Hey, and Councilmember Nance, three years on the charter?
No, I would prefer to.
Okay, so Megan, you have three council members saying they will support and two not.
That's for the term.
Yeah, that's for the terms for three years. Okay, and I have on proposition F that we needed so that you would know whether to send it or not. We needed to vote on proposition F. Um, two things we need to vote on, excused, the, I think it's mainly the excused absence. If we don't want that at all, or if we want to move it up to, I think Councilmember Stevens said maybe ten instead of four. Okay, so I need to know what you guys are thinking, so she'll know what to do.
Yeah.
Councilmember Stone?
I, I'm cool with the three unexcused, but at the same, eh, I, I don't know about the four excused ab- absences. Absences, uh, I, I don't think I could support that one. I'd take that one out.
So any excused absences at all?
I, I honestly, I think that that's up to the voters. That's, you know, that, there's a, there's a spectrum between term limits and a spectrum between. You can be voted on and that's the best way to be able to make sure the right person sits in the seat. So, yeah.
Okay, Councilmember, all of us?
I think that we take these positions, uh, uh. It was to be here to serve the community, not look at excuses for not to be here. And, uh, um, he, we really want to serve, we will be here. Then I think, uh, uh. I don't know, maybe they have cancer and not coming, you know, that, that, that's a real big excuse. But if every time I like, I'm sick, my mom die, my grandma die, so those are maybe excuses, but not excuses. So I, I think the voters, they have to decide on these because they are repres- we are representing. You know, and they want us to be here to represent them, not look at excuses for not to be. So let them, let them choose.
Okay, all right, Councilmember Nance?
Uh, I would remove this. I think it would be relevant to advisory boards where we do have a lot of absences. Um, but for council, I don't think this is really relevant.
Okay, Councilmember Escobedo?
I'll remove it.
Councilmember Stevens?
Go.
All right, so remove proposition, which one was it? F? All right, we're good. See if we got any others we needed. All right, and the rest are good to go.
Actually, still have the conversation on the ones where the proposition hadn't been prepared. Take before the.
Attorneys, which ones?
The conduct of council.
Okay, so what did you have for that one? You had said you had.
I wasn't, I, I, we could not recover any of the data on the left.
Okay.
So, um, I know that this was an item of discussion over making sure that council behaved in a professional manner. It had been discussed before. Um.
And that was because we had council members on it.
I don't know, but.
Give an example without a name?
Walking out of the meeting.
After yelling at everybody.
Yeah, I don't know if the yelling's okay, but I think an act of protest of leaving and breaking coram might be okay. I don't think that that's, uh, you know, a, a, a reason to take someone off of the, the council. But I agree that yelling is not a good thing, and I think that's already covered in the acts.
Yeah, because we can remove them from the meeting.
Yeah.
Yeah. Councilmember, all of us?
Well, I don't think neither one is good, you know, the yelling or leaving just a shambra like a child. Uh, we have what at all saying, I mean, we, it's okay, agree to disagree with respect. So those two are not good at all.
So do you think there needs to be a code of conduct in the charter?
Yeah.
All right, Councilmember Nance?
Uh, would remove it. I don't think we do need a code of conduct for, um, council people. I think there's, you know, informal rules of decorum.
Okay, Councilmember Escobedo?
Um, I don't think we need that. I think we're adults. If we don't know how to behave, then.
Yeah, what do you do when they don't know how to behave? How do you train them like a child, so they're good kindergarten again?
Councilmember Stevens?
I don't think we need it.
Okay, so scratch that. What else? City manager?
That's all I have. So tomorrow I will send everything over to the attorneys. Um, with request to, to review and provide evidence.
All right, perfect. Okay, good.
So just then on that last one, we have chapter twenty-three, it says, the chief of police. Or such member of members in the police department, as he may designate, shall be the sergeant arms council. He, I see, shall carry out all orders and instructions given by the presiding officer. For the purpose of maintaining order decorum at the council meeting. On instructions of the providing officer unless otherwise but directed by a majority vote of council, all of us. It shall be the duty of the designated sergeant arms to remove any person who violates the order and decorum of the meeting.
Including council members.
Yes, unless you, you may say out, we all may say no, person stays. But if you say out, we say, great, okay. So I think we have the mechanism in place already. That's all my point.
All right, good deal. All right.
So it's a solution for this.
There is a.
And it was going at the same time. We were reviewing the charter and chapter twenty-three, so I thought we tried to.
Okay. All right, five minute break. Thank you. Members, please, and we're moving into action items. Action item A belongs to city manager.
Approve the second and final reading of ordinance twenty twenty-four dash zero five dash zero three. An ordinance amending chapter ten, animals to the Alpine Code of Ordinances. Providing for updated definitions within the chapter, including definitions of adequate shelter, definition of euthanasia. And definition of current vaccination requirements, amending the process procedures and timeline. For the empowerment and impoundment and destruction or use of animals encountered by the city. Providing the establishment of a five hundred dollar penalty per occurrence for violations of the ordinance.
Will you approve the second and final reading, ordinance twenty twenty-four dash zero five dash zero three, as presented?
Second. Thank y'all. All right, yes. Discussion.
And this is the second and final. I believe all your questions were answered at the last meeting.
All right, and Councilmember Nance, any questions?
No questions.
Anybody else?
Patty's fantastic. Uh, let's move forward.
Okay, let's vote.
Aye.
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 Aye. Aye.
Okay, city secretary, all members voted in favor of ordinance twenty twenty-four dash oh five dash oh three. It is passed unanimously. Moving on to action item B, this belongs to city manager.
Approve the second and final reading of ordinance twenty twenty-four dash zero five dash zero four. An ordinance amending annexation processes and procedures, the Alpine Code of Ordinances. Amending chapter nine annexation to provide additional requirements upon annexation of a subject property. Amending appendix C zoning to remove the requirement that properties be designated R one. Upon annexation and providing that the city council may establish the zoning designation upon annexation of the subject property.
Motion.
I move, will you approve the second and final reading of ordinance twenty twenty-four dash zero five dash zero four, as presented?
Second.
I'll second.
Okay, discussion, city manager?
As mentioned, this is removing the R one to allow for city council to determine, um, the proper zoning. Where the property is being annexed.
Okay, any other discussion?
No.
No.
Aye.
Yeah. Any discussion?
No discussion.
Vote for.
Aye.
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 Councilmember Nance? Hey, city secretary, this ordinance, ordinance twenty twenty-four dash oh five dash oh four passes unanimously with all council members voting in. Favor of it. Moving on to action item C, city manager.
Approve the second and final reading of ordinance twenty twenty-four dash zero six dash zero one. An ordinance authorizing the vacation abandonment and sale of the partially developed and utilized alley between lot six and eight. And nine and eleven, lot three, original town site of the city of Alpine, Brewster County, Texas. Authorizing the city manager to execute a deed without warranty. Directing that the funds from the sale of the city's interest be deposited in the general fund for the purpose of street improvements. Providing for terms and conditions of such thereof.
Any motion?
I move to approve this second and final reading, ordinance twenty twenty-four dash six dash zero one, as presented.
I second.
Okay, discussion, city manager?
This is the property in which, uh, Ms. Bo, um, is re- and sorry, Dr. Glenn. Are requesting to purchase from the city of Alpine to allow the true value to put their plans. They do understand that there is a. Uh, sewer line and that there would be an easement.
Okay, discussion?
I've heard from one constituent that they are asking about where they put their dumpsters after this. We heard a little bit about that. Um, I have a little bit of concern with that, and I'll just leave it with that.
Okay.
And I'm, I'm okay.
You're okay, okay, council.
I'm okay with this.
Councilmember, see you later.
We heard anything else other than that?
Oh.
Because we send out certified letters, right?
Correct, I believe so, do you?
Uh, on that one, no, we don't send letters surrounding property.
I, it's. Sorry to interrupt. Um, we have dumpster issues all along that if it's not just one business owner. It's probably all fifty.
Even the vote from two weeks ago, it looks like it's gonna pass no matter what, so. We're on by opinion.
And they received petition with signatures of the abutting property owners, correct?
Yeah.
Yeah, so the, but it's just the property owner said, all right, Councilmember Nance?
Had one, uh, question. Uh, Councilmember Olivas asked this last time. I thought it was a really great question. Is there any update on an easement for AEP on those power lines?
I don't know. Okay, Megan says she has not heard.
And then in that case, does that material affect any of this? If we move forward with the purchase, then. AEP, can that, can there be any effect from those power lines and AP in the sale of the property?
So the ordinance does require that the property owners convey an easement for any utilities, whether it be apparent or not apparent. Uh, and it lists basically every sort of utility you could think of, so I I don't believe it'd be an issue.
Gotcha. So we're moved, we would move forward with the sale and AP's interest would be protected?
Yes.
Okay, that was my only question.
And we have our gas utility director here, and he agreed. Thank you for being here, by the way, Randy and Rob. Thank you. All right, ready to vote?
President, I'm voting.
Aye.
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 Councilmember Nance?
Aye.
All right, city secretary ordinance twenty twenty-four dash oh six dash oh one passes with four council members voting in favor. And councilmember Stone abstained. Moving on, um, action item D was disposed of back in changes to posted agenda, which was item number five A. Moving on to action item E, city manager?
Approve West Texas Gas Sales Base Load Contract for three-year term starting July first, twenty twenty-four through June thirtieth, twenty twenty-seven.
Motion.
I'll move, we approve the West Texas Gas Sale, uh, base load contract for three-year term starting July first, twenty twenty-four through June thirtieth, twenty twenty-seven.
Second.
I'll second that.
Okay, discussion, city manager?
So I do want the council to, I I wasn't, we had to get this in the packet in order to have the discussion before the contract expired. The W T G rates fluctuate day to day. It also fluctuates based on our consumption. As of this morning, I was provided the new rate for a twelve-month and thirty-six-month, uh, contract. Twelve months, and it's not in your packets because couldn't put it in after the fact.
Okay.
So twelve months is four dollars and thirty-five cents, which is our current rate. And thirty-six months would be four dollars and seventy cents. So that's a five cent increase from what was provided in your package. So as of today, these are the rates. So if council does approve moving forward with this, we would notify W T G today. So that they could lock it in, so it doesn't change. I did discuss with Randy our consumption, and what you'll find in your packets is an actual breakdown of what we are billed monthly. Um, and you'll notice, um, the total monthly average, and then at the very bottom was a W T G. So what W T G, this is what they bill us at that flat rate. The amount above is the average over the past roughly five years. So we did request that we change that base load amount to allow for the the difference in what we're actually seeing being, uh, consumed. I also do want to point out that the reason we prefer to lock in. Because there is another option. The other option would be a lot less. But we choose not to go that route. Prime example will be February of twenty twenty-one. When the city got hit with the, state of Texas got hit with an ice storm, a winter wonderland, however you want to word it. We were very fortunate to have been locked in to not pay the huge difference. So we were locked in at the, at the different rate. If we choose not to lock in, it's a spot rate, and there's no way for our residents to properly budget. Because one month it may be seventy cents in M S F, and then the next month it may be nineteen dollars. Um, it's very volatile, the gas market, and depending on, of course, what's going on in our, in our economy. Um, four seventy is a slight increase, just to give you some additional understanding. At four seventy, um, which is the thirty-six month contract. For basically one M C F, it would roughly cost the residents fourteen dollars and ninety-four cents. At our current rate, that is fourteen dollars and fifty-seven cents. So it is a slight increase, but it's not significant. Um, I do also want to make it, um, open as we go through the fees coming up. Um, we are going to request for an increase. In order to maintain the gas system, they have done a wonderful job. Um, they have a federal requirement for their DIMP program. We don't want them to get off track, um, distribution improvement maintenance program. We don't want them to get off track. This extra money that we bring in is going to cover their maintenance, their meter. Um, and then the requirement to replace the steel to to poly. Um, part of my city manager discussion is going to indicate we've had much warmer winters the past several years. So you'll see a reduce in revenue coming from the gas department. So locking it in is good for a residence. Um, it's not a significant increase. Um, it would be a three-year so that we don't have to come back next year and. We don't know what the market will be like.
And Randy, since you're here, you want to come on up in case council has any questions? So Randy is our gas utility director. Thank you for being here. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, any questions, comments?
Thank you, Randy, for all you do. Uh, as Megan said, it sounds like y'all are one of the best managed, uh, as far as looking at. The actual infrastructure and making sure that we have regular maintenance. So I appreciate whether that's the federal requirements or you doing your job. Excellent.
It's both because they're on us all the, all the time. We get audited on it, so we have to be on top of it, and we don't want to start. Getting any fines because their fines are very steep.
Awesome. Well, thank you very much again. Um, these questions might not be perfect for Randy. I thought we also maybe had a W T G representative here. Is that? Didn't happen today?
I did ask Mr. J J came to be here. Um, I did remind him earlier today. Um, I don't know why he was not.
What were your questions?
Well, these will just talk into, uh, specifically more just comments. So I appreciate.
Okay, oh, sure.
Yeah.
Uh, and I I wrote an article on this a couple months ago. This is something that I background in as well as L and G across the state. Um, something that I am very concerned about is the inflationary mechanisms that we've seen, of course, in an unregulated market like this. Um, in another month or two, these rates might be cut in half. And so I personally would say we should wait until the middle of the summer to do this. Um, but at the same time, I understand that a contract, it could also, there could be another war in the world that, you know, creates something like this as well. Um, with that, there's been some recent reports saying, uh, uh, coming out of the Houston Chronicle and the Texas Tribune noting the frontline communities that are in our area. We're talking an hour north, uh, where there's flaring, where there's a lot of methane gas that's being released. Um, these companies are not being held to the correct standards, and I'm not talking about you or W T G, which is just moving this gas. Talking about the companies that are taking it out of the ground. Um, and so I I really look at this. At the same time, those same companies are making deals to send this gas, uh, uh, across the sea, mostly to Asian markets as well as to our European allies. Um, and a lot of that, as we, of course, send more gas, um, around the world, it becomes more expensive here at home. So we've actually kind of shot ourselves in the foot by quadrupling the amount of natural gas that we're sending to other places, um, uh, in the world. Um, and so for that, I see as we continue to have, uh, larger increases, it is a pure causation, not a correlation, but a causation as we send more gas. Uh, other places and supporting the companies that are taken out of the ground, then getting it to W T G, and then getting it to you and then to us. Is we're going to continue having inflation. And so I hope that we would sit down and try to bring up some points to these companies and be able to ask them to be able to give us a fair market value, which I think would be less. That's all I got.
Uh, my question is, uh, do they renew this every three years?
Every three. We we have the option. If we lock it in today for three years. After three years, if we want to go to one to two to three, we have the option to change it.
Prize-wise, uh.
Price-wise, uh, is, uh, CD and the gas company doing okay? Or you think that they need a raise or it's okay, the standard, uh?
Well, just, just so that the people understand, we're not wanting to raise it just because uh, we're having to raise the prices on our part, um, for the infrastructure is because the industry, poly pipes going up, everything that we use that goes out in the field has gone up a good twenty-five to fifty percent. The other issues that we are having is that the demand is so high and we're so small. Uh, companies are buying it like hotcakes, trying to store it and store it because of the cost going up. Obviously, we can't buy in bulk, but we're the ones that are getting hit the hardest because we need it when we need it. And so the issue that we're having there is because people are buying it in bulk is that now our lead time, where I could get it in two to three months, now I'm being told that it may take one to two years. So if I fall behind on our Dimp, which is they don't have it, then not only are we losing on, on, on Dimp, on trying to complete our projects, we're gonna be losing with fines for non-compliance.
Explain what Dimp is.
Uh, Distribution Integrity Management Program. That was mandated back in two thousand nine where they, uh, the federal government has asked for us to eliminate all the steel and change it to poly. So luckily that our, uh, Dimp risk model assessments each year that we do are less than a half a percent, meaning that our system is good. But it's because of the maintenance and it's because of staying on top of it. It's because we have cathodic protection on all the steel, which we've been having to replace because the rectifiers are only rated for twenty to twenty-five years. Some of them been in here since nineteen sixty-five. So, so it, it's all about maintenance and the more you stay on top of the maintenance, the better the, the distribution system will be. And so that's why they decided to, to try to get everybody onto poly because the way you look at it, steel was rated for anywhere from seventy-five to a hundred years with good cathodic protection, poly pipe going in the ground, rated for two hundred years.
Ah.
And you don't have to have cathodic protection on it. So it's very important that we try to stay on top of it so that we don't lose ground. And so that's been our ultimate goal ever since, even when the corporation existed, that we stay on top of it so that we don't get hit with any fines.
I know the economy is really hitting everybody, not only you, but, uh, uh, you know, it's going to hit, uh, older people too, so they live in social security. Uh, it would be any, uh, break or any support for those who I'm, I'm talking seniors that don't work, they live on social security, they, they won't be able to pay maybe, uh, the increase or that it would be any discount for them or, or every cost the same.
Yeah, unfortunately, it just, I mean, we do try to accommodate. There's programs out there for people just like that that, uh, they try to help them out with their bills. I know the Sheriff's Department, there's big, big community action.
So the big group reaction is gone.
Gone, but somebody else took it.
South community, south central community, um, and they've been hitting this, so they're obviously a funded group. So when they have money, they help. When they don't, they have.
Big Amistad is also our two-year one representative, which can direct you towards those types of things. They're out of El Paso.
And the, the state does actually have a website that has all these, the assisted, uh, groups, a list of all the assisted groups.
And we also try to help out in-house. We even try to let them set up a three, we still doing the three-month payment?
So we have a, a payment plan. Um, we also have, uh, the budget billing. We have, what we do an extension. Some people don't get their paychecks till a certain time so that they don't get the cutoff. Um, the deposit was increased to cover people who default. Um, we don't actually cut off people until they've gone over a hundred dollars, which is not necessarily easy because if you can't afford the fourteen fifty-seven, you know, it's gonna
Right.
make it harder when you're at a hundred. Um, but we really do work with everyone. Um, but we also don't let people take advantage.
Exactly. Yeah, there you go.
Exactly. We have.
It's a big difference.
Some, we help and help and help and at, at some point we have to just say unfortunately.
Yeah, because there's some people who that even the mom or the grandma house and there is queues that is under the mom house and they want that this council, it has to be uh, difficult to, to, to find who they really need the help, you know, those older people where they, they one by mom, but the social security.
I, I think the hardest case we've ever had is we helped a resident who provided us some information, mother had passed and then the mother was in the next month and
Oh.
really hard for us some days, really hard. Um, but we really do work hard to, to with everyone and there's people in the community who also.
Resurrection story.
Thank you.
Thank Councilmember Nance.
Um, yeah, I'm just gonna say, it looks like it's a little less than a five percent increase over three years, so inflation's probably, I mean, Randy, you just said your costs have gone up way more than that over the last, uh, couple of years, so sounds like a good contract to me for three years.
Okay.
Councilmember Escobado?
Oh, I agree with the contract. Um, I do wanna thank Randy and their department. They have always done a great job. I spent that beginning, I think in twenty sixteen, when I came onto council, I went and I sat with him for about an hour. Puts all the books in, drawing more than, and it was good. I learned something, you know, and that's important to me.
Mm-hmm.
Um, when we're not, when we're not educated in certain ways, it becomes very hard to be here. So thank you and to your department.
You're all welcome.
Thank you for being here tonight. Yeah. Councilmember Stevens?
Yeah, thanks for being here, Randy, and thanks for your response to this. I know we sucked a lot of money out of you when I was you worked your way through it. I do have some business questions though, Megan, to try and understand. I presume the contract we're talking about will be similar to the one that's listed in the handout.
Yeah, so it won't look exactly the same.
Right.
The only difference is, is where it has up to the monthly day slowed quantity.
Yep.
We are changing several of those months to meet more in line with what we're estimated using.
Okay, so that was one of my questions. So thank you for doing that. Uh, and I noted in July, there, there's a spurious month uh, back in twenty twenty-one. I don't know what happened that month, but it must've been a cold summer
That was the winter.
The huge consumption of natural gas there would skews all the numbers.
So.
For July.
The July, well, there, there was, now there was a skew. So for quite some time we had billing issues.
Okay.
So what data we have obviously is.
Okay.
So, yeah.
Yeah, that's okay. You, you, you're working on that. That's what I, no, I just said one month. It was like a winter month in July.
Yeah, uh-huh.
So that's, and, and it skews all the averages, but you've already gotten off work there. Help me understand how the business works. So this says we pay the minimum, whatever the monthly base load is, okay? And if, if we go over, then it says we're gonna pay the seller for those deliveries in excess to be equal to a hundred and three percent of the higher of the first month, West Texas Wahha or El Paso Permian Base Index, as published in Inside Verks Gas Mark, plus a dollar ten. So actually, if we go over these, we're not paying four dollars and seventy cents, we're paying five dollars and eighty cents. That's what this says.
So it's actually two different, yes. So we'll pay four dollars and seventy cents for four thousand in July.
Okay.
Anything over will be at a different rate. Anything under, they classified it as a hedge loss and that's at a different rate. So we're only able to lock in exactly what we're estimating our uses, which is why we wanted to change it. It hasn't been changed properly in.
Years. Okay, great. Okay, so I'm glad you're working on it.
Yeah, no, we, we sat down and looked at all those numbers and said, hey, wait a minute, we're, we're losing here.
Yep.
Not only are we losing, but the, the customer, the consumer is gonna be losing. So that's why we went over and re, we designed those base loads.
Okay, so if I'm a consumer and I consume whatever I consume and we go over our usage, how does the billing work for that for a customer? Uh, is it amortized across all gas uses for that month, therefore we have a rolling rate? Or is it only for those in excess of?
It's a rolling rate, rate.
It's a rolling rate, so everyone pays more.
Everyone pays the same.
Okay, and our current rate is, what'd you say?
Four thirty-five?
No, no, no. I thought, I, I'm a resident. What do I pay?
Fourteen dollars and fifty-seven cents.
Fourteen fifty-seven, fourteen fifty-seven. Okay, so the margin from a city standpoint is gonna be roughly, uh, ten bucks and some change. That's the margin the city gets. And that's what gets Randy his team paid to go do their thing because it's an enterprise. I, yeah, okay. Uh, how many times have we gone under?
Three that I can recall off the top of my head.
What does that cost? Just trying to understand.
Uh, the first time was seven hundred and thirty-something dollars. It was one for four hundred and something dollars. I can't remember the last.
So it's minimal.
Right.
Okay, e- even though, you know, it said at the, you know, buyer agrees to reimburse seller for any financial loss, seller encourages whoever buyers reduce deliveries. There's no cap on that. Uh.
So this all changed in, when we went out in twenty-one, in June of twenty-one. Um, and we'd actually just been hit with the huge two hundred and something thousand dollars been off for all of the gas increase in prices from February. So we actually settled that, which isn't part of any of this. It was part of the new contract, W T G has an additional protection.
Okay, but it sounds like it's minimal on downside.
It is minimal and we've been very.
Yes.
Good. Okay, I'm good. Thank you.
Any other discussion?
I just wanna say is just to, you know, s- support Randy up here. Uh, you know, the reason we have so many of these federal government walls are trying to do this is because houses explode when this stuff goes wrong. It doesn't just make like your water not taste good or something. So, uh, you know, maybe some more federal involvement in all these things, including our water and our wastewater might be a good idea.
Well, I think they're working on that. Really good. So I think they're trying to implement a Dimp program for the water. I mean, T C Q has been talking about it for.
But in copper is their bridge into, yeah.
Those things, yeah.
That's right. But thank Randy for being here. Thank you for all the good job that you do.
All right, you're all welcome.
Thank you. Councilmember Nance, anything else?
Uh, no other comments. Thank you, Randy.
Thank you, Randy. All right, let's vote.
I'm gonna do, uh, President now voting.
Hi. Hi.
Hi. No, I'm, I'm wondering, President not voting. I, I don't understand that. I, I don't get it. You're either for or against, but.
Uh, well, I, I can change my vote now. I guess in the middle I'd be against it.
Okay, all right, Councilmember Nance?
Uh, hi.
Okay, City Secretary, the West Texas Gas Sales Base Load Contract for Three Years has been approved with four council members voting in favor. One council member, Councilmember Stone, voting against. All right, excellent. So executive reports. I just wanna say, Randy, thank you for taking the time to be here tonight. Uh, as one of the other couns, I think it was Councilmember Escobado mentioned, we, we are, you're the expert, so it's great to have you here uh, whenever there's something on the agenda involving your department. So thank you. I know you had to take time out of your evening and tonight's meeting went a little long because of the charter stuff, so I appreciate that. Thank you. And also to Rob, thank you also. And of course, Daryl, always here, we appreciate that. And then Abel too, he runs our tech. And then, of course, we have Megan and, and Geo that are here at every meeting, but thank you guys. And with that, I'm gonna turn it over to the City Manager.
So I have two items. The first one is the Revenue and Expense Report. I'm gonna quickly go over the numbers. Um, marketing in here just for historical information, currently we're with April. Um, the general fund, um, actual revenue was four million seventy-nine thousand three hundred and seventy-one at the end of April, which is roughly fifty-five point five percent of the budget. Expenses were two million six hundred and ninety-eight thousand three hundred and eighty-three, roughly forty-three percent. Water, wastewater and sanitation, um, revenue was at the end of April, two million eight hundred and twenty-five thousand six hundred and twenty-six, roughly forty-two percent of the budget. Their expenditures were two million two hundred and twenty-seven thousand nine hundred and fifteen, roughly thirty-three percent of the budget. The airport fund brought in five hundred and eleven thousand nine hundred and ninety-eight, roughly sixty-three point nine, and their expenditures were five hundred and ten thousand eighty dollars, roughly sixty-three point seven. Auto occupancy tax was at three hundred and eighty-eight thousand two hundred and five. Their expenses were at four hundred and two thousand nine hundred and thirty. The gas utility fund brought in one million five hundred and forty-three thousand six hundred and thirty dollars and their expenses were one million one hundred and eighteen thousand four hundred and ninety-eight. Interest and sinking was a hundred and forty-seven thousand nine hundred and four in revenue and the expenses was a hundred and forty-one thousand three hundred and sixty-seven. Just some notes to follow up with where we're at. Um, as of May thirty-first, property tax collections was down one percent from this time last year. I know that there has been some conversations in regards to what's going on with the property taxes. The city of Alpine wasn't hit as, as much as the, uh, school district. The school district, the campus, uh, more than just the city limits, so they saw a different, uh, feedback. The state also put in the hundred thousand dollar exemption cap, which created some reven, or refunds in, in regards to the property tax payments. As of June reporting for sales tax, um, I think sometimes the information is a little confusing what is provided by the state comptroller. So as of June, we were actually only down eleven percent for the year to date. So from twenty twenty-three to twenty twenty-four, we're eleven percent down. But actually for June, between twenty-three and twenty-four, we're up three percent. Our sales desk does do this. So from month to month, we, we do have to look at it to see where we're at. Um, we do have a couple of big events. Um, we do utilize the cell tax data to kind of see how people are, are coming in and spending. Um, a lot of our, um, retail, a lot of our restaurants, um, we do have the ability to look at that data. That won't be in the report. What's provided in June is actually what's collected in April. So they're a little behind in how it all gets managed. So I kinda wanted to bring that up because I know there had been some discussion with, you know, we're so far behind, we're, we're really not. Um, most departments are currently under spending and I kinda wanted to, and this will kind of elaborate on what Randy's going through. Procurement is really hard in our area. Um, one, uh, we do require quotes for, uh, purchases over twenty-five hundred dollars. The reason why we do that because that is also, also our threshold for assets. So we wanna make sure we're getting the, the best for what we're spending the taxpayer money on. We're also very limited to reasonable vendors. And when I say reasonable, we all have had the conversation, it's been on social media with, you know, you go to the grocery store, you go to the dollar store, you go here, whereas if you're in a bigger city. So we are unique, um, when it comes to, to items in this area. We're also very limited. We don't have large corporations within our boundaries or within our, or really our Big Ben region to be able to run to a Walmart, a Sam's, a Home Depot, um, those type of vendors. We're also tied to the state procurement and I know that all of the departments hate me because I am a stickler for let's just follow the state law. The state law is the most important thing. The state law procurement requires that for any vendor that we spend in excess of fifty thousand dollars has to go out for a request for proposal. We have to bid it. I have to keep a running list of what we are spending with every vendor because we have emergencies. We have one company that responds to everything we need. But as soon as that vendor hits forty-nine ninety-nine, we can't use them without going for proposals or for bids. What that means is it's another two to, or, yeah, I'd say two to two and a half months of trying to get someone to respond to it. Um, council's been very aware that when we go out for a bid, we may get zero response. But then we're on hold. I know that the biggest item of discussion for the longest time is that poor fire hydrant on Gaia. We were on a hold because we hit a vendor cap. Would have to go out for proposal. And then we learned that we couldn't fix it without bringing in a third party because we don't have the ability to do hot taps, which means we're not reducing the water pressure at all. It is considered a live, which means that P S I could be upwards of a hundred. That can take fingers off. So we have to bring in a professional. That makes it very difficult for our departments to get products, to be able to continue. So they underspend. We also have the issues with, it takes months. You know, it used to be eight weeks and it was thirteen weeks and everything's kind of exaggerated. So when you look at, you know, April and you see the expenditures are low, it's because the procurement is becoming slightly harder. We have joined a lot of the purchasing co-ops, but they just don't all have the needs we need. So we're working on that, but I just don't want council to think, oh, well, you're underspending. We're in the budget process, you don't need it next year. That's not the case. The departments need the resources to do their job. We're just having a harder time getting them. Some of the other concerns that I want to point out, and I know Chris Rujia kind of hates me when we get to July, so the hot tax collection is kind of low. When you look at that report, it looks like we're only bringing in thirty-seven point four percent. That's from what we totally budgeted. As part of that budget, we also included three hundred and eighty-seven thousand in fund reserves. So the collections are actually more along the lines of sixty percent in addition to the difference with the fund balance. We do monitor this one closer to the summer months because we have the fifty percent requirement to spend on advertising. So in July, once we get this next quarter payment, we will know whether or not we need to really look at what we're gonna do, if we're gonna utilize part of that fund balance. Or if I'm gonna have to ask Chris, hey, you need to get a marketing plan out there because, you know, we're gonna exceed what we predicted and we're required to make sure we spend fifty percent towards advertising. So that one we do monitor. The gas department revenues every year have slowly decreased, which is why we've tried to increase some of the revenue sources so that they can maintain the system. We don't want them to not be able to, as Randy mentioned. So we do monitor it. It is low right now and we're not expecting it to meet the estimated budget. Their summer months are gonna, they go down. It's the winter months that make the biggest difference. We've had warm summers with the anomaly of twenty-twenty-one. And when I say warm summers, we're not seeing the snow, we're not seeing the ice, winters, thank you. We're just not seeing it. I bought a farmer's almanac hoping I could do some predictions as we move forward. We just have to really monitor that one. The summer is the big key. So those are the two big ones. The gas department does not have a fund or a reserve account. They're the only department that does not have money set aside. As a result, in order to maintain the budget, we will have to look at utilizing what we call net balance on an enterprise, which is kind of their fund balance, or cutting expenses. So that will be a discussion in the next couple of months. The only other item of conversation I wanted to bring to council tonight is the west side Alpine water concerns. On May seventeenth of twenty of this year, I notified council that we had a major water leak. It drained the storage tank, which is upper hill, which is the very top one, creating concerns with the water pressure. We thought we could recharge it. We thought we were doing good. We'd get it up to ten feet, we'd get it up to twelve feet. As of the past two weeks, we've only been able to main it between two and four feet. And that means there is someone on the system every hour on the hour to move water from the wells to the sunny glen storage tanks to the big tank. And this is something that has been talked about in the past. No true, okay, how do we do this? What data's telling us where we at? Do we have leaks? As of this week, I got to have a heart-to-heart with multiple individuals, including Skinner, well service and our engineers. Our game plan moving forward is as follows. We are monitoring daily for detection of leaks and they are our priority repairs. We have reached out and asked the I S D to reduce their watering because the middle school and the central are the big components on that side. We've reached out to the hotels to confirm whether they're on their own well or if they could reduce their watering. All city facilities on the west side of Alpine will not be watered. That will affect some of our parks. But our residents are more important. We'd like you to have drinking and potable water in your homes. Skinner Well Services provided me with a huge pack of additional information, including all of the city wells that the city at one point had access to or owned. We've given away twelve. So we have given away our sustainability. They've also provided me with access and information to additional websites that are just fantastic, didn't know about. And then we've asked them to work back with understanding what our water levels are at in each of the wells so that we can work back with the engineers. We contacted the engineers and they have a site visit scheduled for June twenty-sixth. We are once again having issues with our well readings. So Mr. Tippett has volunteered again to help us come in and get that cleaned up. We can't pump water back into the ground. And so that's what our well readings are telling us. So we're trying to get that back on track. It is an Excel spreadsheet. The formulas sometimes get off track. But we're getting that put together for the engineers. We also have found a prior well-filled evaluation that was done in two thousand and seven that did outline the city would have trouble. And kind of made some suggestions. This goes back to your plans. They sit on a shelf, nothing gets done. But it's been an adventure. There's one more plan that we're looking for. It's the engineering blueprints or plans for the booster station, the booster we say has gone nowhere. The Skinners and prior employees of the city are all convinced it was engineered backwards. So instead of the water being pumped from the lower hill, which goes to the east side of town, the water would pump from lower hill to upper hill to help feed the west side. It went from the booster pumped it into the actual line, into the system. And so instead of pumping it into a tank to help, and that would combine the two sides, they believe that that's why all the lines started to break because it was not, the pressure was going the wrong direction. So we're working on getting those. We did find a res, I found a resolution from two thousand and twelve that provided the engineer at the time, Naismith and I T T. Well, I can't remember. The company that actually put in the booster plant. So we've been able to narrow down more information to try to find it. And we will continue to do what we're doing to ensure that there is a water supply to the west side. But I just want council to be prepared as we start bringing forward possible solutions, possible, hey, we need to move this direction, that you understand where we're at.
One more, you got a lot of work going on. One, we'll get together so we can update on your game plan.
So after I visit with the engineers on the twenty-sixth, which is next Wednesday, we'll kind of have a follow-up meeting probably the first week of July. Right now, our data isn't telling us, we don't know what it's telling us. We know we have issues with Pierce King. We don't know. At this point, I made the kind of, is there a leak somewhere that we're just not finding? Has someone tapped into our line?
That's what Mr. Tippett's gonna help you with, the data.
Well, he gets us the consumption, the capacity.
Okay, good.
So I know that this was conversation last summer and I know that it's hard when I say we need to go on our conservation plan. We live in a desert. Our conservation plan is currently being redrafted to be able to, one, provide some of that guidance for what we need to do in these situations. The way our current plan reads, it doesn't quite meet us going into the plan because it's only a portion of the city and the plan applies to the whole city. The majority of the city is on the Moose's wells and so it's just this section of the west side. We know that the capacity isn't there for the west side because we can't, we can't get the tank full. But they're not giving up. They're gonna continue to push the water as necessary. I encourage everyone to do whatever means of rain gas they know. Rain is our best solution unfortunately for a temporary relief. So we're looking at after, and he has most of the data, once he analyzes it, he's one of our engineers. We'll kind of come back with what's next. If we can find the plans for that booster pump, we think that would be a huge, huge improvement, a huge slight step forward.
So you'll give us an update after July second meeting? Probably more information to...
Yes, so it's gonna be on the agenda every meeting.
Super, excellent.
Councilmember Nance?
Agree with Stevens right there, that that's super to have that on every agenda. And then the one thing that you had mentioned, I was gonna say about it being so hard to procure stuff out here. What goes to my head on that is, is kind of what Randy's done with the gas department, moving into preventative maintenance. Because if you're in preventative maintenance mode, you have time to procure stuff. I know right now we're just in fix-it mode with the water leaks and stuff, so that was it.
Councilwoman Escobedo? More mention?
I don't know. Well, we need, we need a solution. Hopefully we'll get it quick.
Councilmember Rollos?
Is the city going to put restrictions to water the plants because not enough water or not yet?
So based on our current conservation plan, we can't really go into it because the capacities for the city is open. It doesn't address a portion, which is why one should be updated every five years, which is why we're redrafting it to allow for us to put in stages. And I think we do need to put in those watering schedules, no matter whether we need it or not. I think it's important that we start, the whole idea of the conservation plan from day one was to educate and to prevent and to be sustainable. We never really followed through with it, so this is our opportunity to get back.
Who's trapping it here? No. The engineers?
The engineers are assisting us with it because there is the component of capacity, what we're using, what we're not using, what we have available, which is why we need Skinner Well Service to help us understand what the water table levels are. I was able to provide them with my, I had an internal spreadsheet as I had found information, I kind of plugged it in. So we're looking at our well depths, we're looking at what wells could be rehabbed, we're looking at if we can use, we do have a test well that was dug, that was what they call a power well, which means it would produce the amount. I know that we've brought up taking on like the Dodberry well, we've had another gentleman offer a location, east side, not west side. There's all these solutions. But in order, this kind of goes back to the, we need the foundation. To understand what we truly need, we need to know what we have. And that's been the hardest part. I know Rick Stevens has brought that up multiple times, well, what's the capacity, what are our levels? We do have one well that we think we're gonna have to retire. It's just, it's not gonna produce or usable. But we have other ones. When we look at adding other wells that we've already had, we still do have the T C two requirements that we'd have to follow. But we're also now considering, like you said, Councilor Stone, it's the maintenance, it's the long-term. Adding on these wells that were previously on the system, we're adding back in all of that pipeline. The May seventeen leak, and I give Daryl's team credit, we had a drone in the air. We were looking for the green spot. We were looking for the section in the middle of a sunny glen field that could tell us we have a problem. On the SCADA system for four hours, we watched the water just disappear. I mean, you just watch it, it just goes away. It took a private citizen jumping fence lines to help us.
And a drone. Somebody asked about that drone. Is it infrared? I don't know why they wanted to know, but...
No.
Okay.
But, but these, we've called him again. We had that leak on the Friday, they got it fixed on Saturday. And I do remind the public and council, they had to do that by hand because it was over the forty-two inch gas pipeline, N E T P safety. I'd rather them do it by hand and be careful. That following Monday, we had two more water leaks in the Sun England area. So even as we were trying to recharge, that water was just automatically taken back out. So every day they are running the pipeline. We are out there searching. I don't drive home and see water without stopping, be like, is it a leak or does someone like water yard? Because this side of town is vulnerable right now. Like I said, we're moving forward.
And you said Skinner has water table data?
We've asked him to help us provide that, so...
That would be interesting.
So we also take into consideration, the first thing, of course, Skinner's gonna have most of our data because his father and family's actually the one who did most of our work. So he has been gracious to sit down with me and have conversations and tell me you can't kick it down the road. Someone's gotta solve something. And so I've taken it on like a mission, we're gonna fix it. But it's not short term. So he's gonna look at the well depths and then the table, the water table levels. We've also, he's on May twenty-second, he went and did a, the pump, the gallons per minute. So he went through and told us how much each one of those are running. The thing that we need to understand is a lot of those wells that we let go of are in the Sun England area. One, two...
Five. And they were city-owned wells?
So they were either city-owned or leased. So we let go of leases and gave them back to the property owners. Some weren't, you know, in the wrong, I mean, it wasn't a valuable well, which wasn't gonna produce what we needed. But that means the ones that we have running are twenty-four seven. They're not stopping, which means that equipment is gonna get tired. Which means, you know, it's making sure we have a pump on backup. Our largest one is Robert's number three. It should be producing three hundred to three hundred and fifteen gallons per minute. It's producing about a hundred and twenty. So that's half the capacity run. So a lot of evaluation, a lot of data. We don't have the redundancy with the Pierce tank. That went down in roughly twenty-twenty. No one knows what happened, but the water just doesn't go that church anymore. So... Now you know everything I know.
Okay. All right.
Cool questions if I might. First, how are those companies and organizations that we've asked to reduce their water, how are they responding?
Pretty well. I know the Parker Hotel, she had switched all of hers onto her own private. So she was really gracious with like, you know, we did that because of the issue. I did reach out to the superintendent specifically. She sent out an email to her maintenance crew saying, hey, let's go ahead and reduce the water. And then, of course, the city, you'll notice that we've just, we're gonna do the bare minimum.
True. And I just spoke to Dr. Hernandez at Soul Ross today and he said that he might be asking him to reduce some at some point as well. And he said he's open to discussing that. It's just a point of information there. Also, I know we discussed at one of the meetings a week or two ago, one of the town hall type meetings discussing water. We were talking about connecting east to west. Can you just remind me what the timetable is on that again?
So we had done a feasibility study to connect the two sides, specifically because of the new developments coming in on the east side. So we could tie into Soul Ross and we can move it over this direction. Or we could, the booster pump, we can have that reevaluated.
Gotcha.
So we're hoping, based on conversations and just thought process and visiting with the much older employees who have retired, that that might be our key. There's also the consideration for funding. Any funding we go after isn't gonna happen within a year. So it's really understanding, okay, we've got a game plan. The next up is, does council want to borrow money? Does council want to, I mean, we can go for grants, but we're not guaranteed.
Yeah. And just a point of information here, question. Just because we're seeing it and people are asking me as I walk around the neighborhood. In Ward one, I believe it's in Ward one, it's Eighth or Ninth Street, there's an area that's shut off with a large bulldozer next to it and a big mound of dirt next to it. Is there any timetable on that being fixed or do we know what's going on there? It's a sewer repair. Okay, so not necessarily water. I'll talk to you about it after, just seeing what's going on. And then with councils, just not necessarily blessing, but I'd love to be able to talk about in two weeks about water restrictions. Every other town in the state is, you know, we're doing hand watering. We're doing, you know, days of the week, things like that, so bringing up ideas like that. Of course, a big campaign promise is not to over-criminalize or, you know, look at ways to, you know, fine our citizens as well. But at the same time, we live in a desert and if San Antonio or Houston is even putting these in and, you know, all we're expected in the next month is maybe a tropical storm. Hopefully at the end of the week with a quarter inch of rain, doesn't seem like there's anything coming on soon. So I'd love to be able to add that to the calendar to talk about water restrictions in some ways. And I do appreciate and want to note that we are asking companies and hopefully, you know, are any industrial or any big water users to, you know, set back on them first before we go to our residents, just like we do on a statewide basis with electricity. We try to turn off the lights at the big office buildings that aren't being used during the day when it's real hot or real cold, before we try to do anything with our residents because we want to make sure that that water's there for them.
And then that's where I really want the residents to understand, there's two sides. So the east side, even though we had that major water leak on one eighteen Fifth Street, we were able to monitor that water and recharge, you know, very easily. The fire, we were able to recharge and keep that going.
Hydrates worked.
Yes, the hydrates did work. We just haven't been able to recharge the west. But the water, I mean, they're not giving up, so they're still pushing that water. But the water, I mean, they're they're not giving up, so they're they're still pushing that water every hour on.
Appreciate you, Megan. Thank you.
Thank you. I have a question. It was a leak this week by the class vehicles bank.
Minor leak. The text dot had to be there because it was a highway.
Well, so text dot won't assist us on planned repairs. So we're actually hiring a third party vendor because they have to have traffic control certification. So we're hiring a third party out of El Paso. They come in and provide the necessary equipment, the big, the big trucks with the signs and all that. And one, it is good for the protection of our employees. But text that won't allow us moving forward to cut their roads without having the proper traffic control safety devices. So we're kind of on El Paso's dime as far as when they can get back over here. We're very lucky that they're working the one eighteen project. And so they did fix one and then we had another one pop up near the Napa Auto Store. So those are what we call planned fixes, which means we have to have the traffic control and we have to coordinate back with tech side. Those are affecting the east side, not the west.
You took that. How about the parks that they won't water as much the parks? I hate to mention, but the Medina Park has been watering in a year. So I guess they're not getting any water right now.
No, actually the Medina Park watering system doesn't work. So that was found out recently. And their backflow is actually out of compliance in order for them to have the irrigation system. And they also had a major water leak last year, and in the process, the mirror was removed. But in light of the current situation, they will be doing the bare minimum.
And all of the parts would be in charge to. Take care of all that or is this a city issue?
So the water?
To fix that water.
So the Parks Department is responsible for the maintenance. So they're working on finding a third party because we don't have the ability to do the backflow. And you have to have a licensed plumber come in and do that. And so we have those inspected. Most of our parks have them that have irrigation systems. So they're working on getting that. So when the backflow device broke, that that mechanism, it just, they didn't move forward. I know at the time they were looking at a really high cost. So they're going to get it fixed, but their watering will be very.
Thank you.
Anything else?
One more comment, maybe to help Eva out here. I saw that there's a water truck coming around occasionally, especially on the main street, like watering the the trees on the main street. I do appreciate that. Would that be helpful, Eva, if we're able to say, can we get a little water at the park or? And that could be gray water even, I guess, if it's possible. Can't be gray. Cool. I hate gray water, but I love it.
So that's a different program. That is being maintained by our environmental services because we have a contract with Dexot to maintain the right of waste, which includes all of.
Those trees. Are we able to 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 request at any point to help out Eva to get a little bit of water over there too? I'm sure we have some infrastructure or or truck or something that could help out with that.
Yeah, so we could work back with the Parks Department and ask them to. It would just be for mainly the trees and we're not going to focus on the grass.
Yeah. That works.
That'd be nice. I hear about that too, even though I'm not in that that board, yeah.
Before the fire, they were trying to adopt a tree and I adopted one, so it's still the plan, it's still going on.
It still is, and the ones that were knocked down as part of trying to get the the material back into the building. And we are working on trying to figure out how to replace those.
But this is all the city or was just on the main street?
No, it's just the main street.
Anything else? Councilmember Nance?
No comment.
Okay. All right, let's move on to council member comments and we're going to change it up a little bit and start with council member Stevens.
I don't know much, Ellen. Megan, thanks for continuing to manage the budget. Appreciate the update on water. Randy, thanks for doing what you're doing and. Robert, appreciate what you go from a city standpoint. That's all I got.
Right, Councilmember Escobedo?
I just wanted to thank everybody for attending and staying here as long as y'all have.
Councilmember Nance?
No comments.
Councilmember Allavis?
Yes, I want to thank everyone for being here and listen to us. Your opinions are well appreciated and one again, if anybody who would like to explain all the meeting today in Spanish. I would be glad to explain if it's in my world. So I'll just specify what we talked today. So that would be the Spanish.
Thank you. And that's very nice to explain to anybody, including anybody who might be watching this on YouTube that wants to get in contact with you later.
Want to thank gas department. Thank you for being here and all you do, as well as the permitting department. And appreciate Megan, all your work on the budget. I love that this is, you know, if it targets, you're able to explain what's going on where. Where you need to, and I appreciate the mayor for being able to have the transparency to be able to have the the community to be able to see this stuff as well.
And I also want to thank again Rob and Randy for being here this evening. We really appreciate it to have experts available if we should need it. And of course, Megan works very hard. Thank you for all that you do and for keeping us updated on everything and for telling us the cold, hard truth about the problems going on on the west side. We really appreciate that. And Gio, thank you. I think there was a lot of stuff we asked you to add tonight. So thank you for taking care of that and everything that you do as well. We appreciate you just as much. All right, so that was council member, oh, councilmember Nance. Yeah, we we did ask. You said nothing, correct? Okay, perfect. All right, so with that, that brings us to executive session. Which is now item number eleven, executive session pursuant to chapter five five one of the Texas government code. The city council reserves the right to convene into executive session from time to time. As deemed necessary during this meeting for any opposed agenda item. Or to receive advice from the attorney as permitted by law. So tonight, the city council will recess into executive session pursuant to section five five one point oh seven one of the Texas government code. To have an update with the city attorney discussing the items listed on the agenda, customs and border protection hangar lease and. Pending public information requests and the attorney general response. May I get a motion to move into executive?
Move, move to executive session.
I need a second. Any discussion?
Aye.
Okay, see you nine. Okay, aye.
Aye.
Councilmember Nance?
Hi.
Okay, city secretary has passed unanimously to move into executive session. We're going to enter executive session at eight twenty-eight P M. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. Thank you. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you. Bye. Thank you. Thank you, Jim. All right, five minute break.
I wanted to say why occasionally I might.